If I can get everyone to start heading towards your seat, please. Welcome to your meeting. It is May 13th, a little after 3 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and call this business meeting officially to order. Would like to thank each and every one of you for attending. We had our swearing in ceremony at 2 o'clock. So for those of you that weren't here, would like to acknowledge your new councilman, Place One, Tim Reed. So, thank you, Tim. Welcome. Councilmember Kraft was able to make his final remarks from the dais and has stepped off. And so, we welcome Tim Reed and look forward to working alongside of him. We're going to go ahead and move into this business meeting. If I could, I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the invocation as Kim Tally comes forward to lead that. Remain standing for the pledges after.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley, and City Council members for the privilege to pray with you and for you. Let's enter to the presence of the Lord, shall we? Dear holy and heavily Father, as I was thinking about how to pray for this wonderful group of leaders, I'm reminded of the words of John Winthrop, the founder of the city of Boston, who at their first council meeting challenged the leaders to make Boston a city upon a hill, a beacon of hope, borrowing from the words of our Lord Jesus recorded in Matthew 5:14. Lord, our city is not on a hill but a high and dry plain, yet we all are known as traditionally a city of friendliness, philanthropy, and faith. May we continue to be a shining city of light to the Panhandle, to our state, and to our nation. Father God, today we present to you this newly-elected body of city servants. We know they are not here by accident or by man's plan, but by your sovereign will. We ask that you bless them with these gifts. First, the gift of wisdom, that they would not lean on their own understanding, but in all their ways acknowledge you. That they would not use their own wisdom, but as James says, and asks, and challenges us, if anyone among you lacks wisdom, let them ask God, who gives generously to all people without reproach, and it will be given to them. But let them do so with faith. Along with wisdom, Lord, secondly, we ask that you bless them with unity. In these divided days, tough, tough battles, elections, it's difficult, but we pray they would find the best common ground for Amarillo instead of their own agendas. As Christ prayed for us in the garden before his death, may they be one as you and I are one, Father. As the psalmist says in Psalm 133, how good and pleasant it is for members to dwell together in unity. Lord, that unity comes from you. And lastly, Lord, may they have the heart, continue to have the heart of a servant. May they take the example of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who set aside his throne and glory to become one of us, and then he laid down his life and died for us so that we could live for him. He went to hell so we could be in heaven. May we all serve you first, and people second, and ourselves last. So, Lord, we bring this chosen body of leaders before your throne and ask you, Father God, give them your guidance. Lord Jesus, remind them of how much they are loved by you. Holy Spirit, empower and encourage them in this high calling. And we ask this in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. You'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Thank you for that indication, sir. That was beautiful. We appreciate the comments and the requests for wisdom. So, it's an honor to sit here before you and run a business meeting. We'll see if we can run them any shorter this term than we did last year. I think that that may be the first legitimate criticism is how lengthy these meetings have been, and we will try to continue to hear each and every person. We open up for public comment. We'll continue to do that. We would ask you guys, we don't have a buzzer or a bell. The trap door is not functioning right now. And so, we would ask you to keep it to three minutes, to respect everybody else that needs to have their voice heard as well. You're welcome to speak on anything that's applicable to city business. So, we thank you for that. I have two proclamations that we're gonna, we're gonna do here. I would ask Councilman Sherlin, just that you read Older Americans Month, not because you're older, but just because you're to my left, and National Public Works Week to Councilman Simpson, the much younger Simpson on the end. If you guys will join me down there, we're going to go ahead and do this. And so, let's start with National Public Works Week. Those individuals that are here to receive that, if you'd come forward, please.
Well, good afternoon. Our first proclamation is for National Public Works Week, and we have many of the people who help serve us in this community and in this capacity. Whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Amarillo. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Amarillo, Texas, to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, for we, mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as National Public Works Month in Amarillo, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and advancing the quality of life.
Thank you, Councilman Simpson, mayor, council. I appreciate that. I'm Alan Harder, Public Works Director. I just want to say, who you see before you here is the leadership representatives from every division within Public Works. They represent almost 400 dedicated men and women who serve our community in the Public Works Department. And this week, this proclamation is really for them. And so, we thank you for that. We're just here to represent them. But thank you for your appreciation and recognition today. Thanks.
I noticed when the mayor was looking to the left, I was in trouble. I guess I am the old guy. But you know what? That's the best thing to be. Come on up. Come on up. At least I made it this far. Plan on making it a whole lot more with more energy than I've ever had. City of Amarillo proclamation, whereas the city of Amarillo proudly joins the nation in deserving Older Americans Month, East May, honoring the invaluable contribution of older adults to our community and country. Whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas, older adults in Amarillo have built resilience and strength over their lives through success, failures, joys, difficulties, and their stories and contributions enrich the community. And whereas, the city of Amarillo is committed to promoting the independence, inclusion, and well-being of older adults, ensuring they remain active, engaged, and valued members of our community. And whereas, we recognize the importance of the community's support and the role of intergenerational relationship, enhancing and qualifying quality of life for older residents. And now, therefore, we, mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Older American Month. In Amarillo, and urge all citizens to take this month to acknowledge the older adults in their life, to learn from their experiences, and to participate in activities that promote well-being, inclusion of older members of our community.
Thank you for reading our proclamation. I just wanted to thank our planning committee members for helping us organize this event, and this year's education sponsor, which is the Vivins Foundation. And every year, we celebrate Older Americans Month, and this year's theme is Flip the Script on Aging, which is focusing on the importance of combating ageism. And ageism affects how we view older adults and how they view themselves. So, we're hoping that tomorrow's celebration will help bring a more positive perspective on aging. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to do that. And thank you to all who attended for those proclamations. We are now going to move into announcements, six on our agenda. Ms. City Secretary, do we have any announcements that you need to give us?
No, sir, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'll move us forward into item number seven, which is public comments. I'm going to hand this over to the city secretary, ask her to read us into that, and then just go down the list of who's already signed up.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. If you'll give me just one moment to pull this up. Apologize, Mayor. One moment longer.
No worries. One thing that I will address, for those of you guys that do watch and look online, you pull the agendas off, you'll see that we've made a change here today. We're going to try this and see if this works out a little bit better. So, a lot of times, we have discussion, and our discussion items can be six or seven discussions long. We have people that want to interact and engage in those discussions. Most of the time, those are community members, and sometimes they can feel like, well, I'm being left out because it happens before 5 o'clock. And so, what we're trying this time is we're pulling our consent agenda forward. That allows us to do two things. There's also people sitting in the room that are here for business. Maybe they have a contract that needs to be awarded, or they're, they're looking to see an outcome on a vote. So, if we pull our consent up, we can go through that first. That way, those individuals don't have to wait. And then, it allows us to get into discussion a little bit later, hopefully giving more citizens time to be here to participate, or at least hear that discussion. So, you'll see that as we move forward. We'll flip those around on the agenda. If it becomes a problem, for whatever reason, we'll put it back the way it was. But that may be something that you're noticing. And I'm just stalling.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that, I'm ready. I appreciate the assist. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or any topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. You'll see your time up on the screen while you're talking, and so, we would just remind you to be aware and stick to your three minutes that we have allocated to each of you. We do have multiple public hearings today. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, we would ask you to speak on that item either during public comment or during the public hearing, so that we can keep an accurate record of today's meeting. It's your choice at which time you would like to speak. And then, when you come up to the microphone today, we would just ask that you state your name, whether or not you live in Amarillo city limits, and then you may begin addressing your city council. So, first today is David Besman, and after David will be Alan Feingold. So, Mr. Besman, you may come up to the microphone and address city council.
Either one, sir. Appreciate you.
My name's David Besman, and I do live in the city of Amarillo, North 13th and Blue Bell Street. Okay. I got one heck of a problem with the police department. I mean, since I got here in 21, many people want me to say something about Amarillo Police Department. And I've been threatened, threatened with beating, jamming, taking, I'm getting them again. I'm owed restitution at the parking attorney's license, hammered. And my house blown to hell, excuse me, car theft, and it's a neighbor fifty grand, I guess. And I wouldn't mind picking up on it. Another guy that's, he works out the petrol, he's retired, and he's always hassling me. And it's all here, and the friends that I have, all these guys have it. And the final is a district community service for, I'm just an advertising guy on 75 Lakeside, and heavy for irregular crosswalks or something. I didn't fully understand it. Anyway, I tried to turn it down, been there for a month. I tried to turn it in, went to court. Went to court, took it away from me. So, I'm not supposed to have it. And then went in court, and I went off like a bucket. I just, I'd like to apologize, but the way things are, when someone was at my hostel desk, turned into a fried donkey. Something I'm wearing a blue uniform, badge, and gun. And 1920, Governor Rick Perry, I figured my photograph was on the locker room wall. And he warned the police office, peace officers, and what I know, about expecting me to demand a gun, the badge, and run them out of town, I guess. That's what I understand. I turned this into judges, the courts, and, you know, I don't like to go home at night and be demanded by volatile porkies to die. I will not die for this. It ain't worth it. I get a little irate, irrational, and once we live in my, I live in an apartment complex. Once you hear me ranting and raving at home. And I'll leave this, and I put my name and number on it. And don't be afraid to get a hold of me, because, man, it's way out of my league. I mean, I've been a former construction, a drilling mechanic. Was I on the driving truck, sir?
Yeah.
I'm looking at a marshal, a fake, on the highway. Man, I don't know if I could make it.
If you'll put your name and number on that, sir, you can give it to Officer Padron.
I don't know if I can do it, man. I'm in 65 this year. I have SSS coming up. Yeah, I'm in and they didn't get my restitution. They didn't mail it out. I'm almost out of town last night. These guys want to threaten me down, pull me down the road. They don't carry out. They carry out. That's the only case in my life. But in 1980, Amarillo Police Department struck its nose. And other cities that, Sheridan, Wyoming, Idaho Falls, hate crime, didn't that prosecute? And they go out and prosecute. What I'm not holding is beyond belief. Sheridan, Wyoming, that's that. That's my hometown.
Mr. Besman, we appreciate you coming in and speaking. I have the documentation. We'll make sure staff reviews it appropriately, and then we'll contact you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
Alan Feingold, and after Mr. Feingold will be Charles Little.
Hi. I want to speak to you today about your water and sewer rights, and particularly the existence of what's called the monthly water charge. I am going to have to introduce a term, I will call it a unit, and a unit means 1,000 gallons. Your water fees and sewer fees are done in terms of units. I have a list of that here, if any of you want it, but I'll give you a very brief summary. If you've got what's called a 5/8 inch meter size, your monthly minimum fee for water is $18.24. If you have a 1-inch meter size, your minimum monthly fee is $24.48. I'm just going to call that $24.50, and I'm going to refer constantly to the 1-inch meter size, since almost all the new houses, or all houses that were built in the last 40 years, use that 1-inch meter size. The city had a saying that it used to use. It was, "Every drop counts," and it was in reference to water. Now, I never could figure out exactly what that meant. Once upon a time, I did some work as a chemical lab technician, and indeed, in certain processes, every drop did count. But the idea that every drop counts when you're using 16 billion gallons of water is rather ridiculous. So, I think I'm just going to interpret the city slogan to say, "Be careful about your water use." So, I want to make a comparison to the most frugal water users you have with the most prolific water users you have. Let's say, for the sake of argument, we're talking about residences. The most frugal water users you have use, say, 1,000 gallons a month, they're going to pay that full fee of $24.50. The least frugal water users you have for a residence, say, use 100,000 gallons a month, 100 times as much per month, they're going to pay approximately $560, which is a lot more. But when you figure it as per-unit cost, the most prolific water users pay approximately $5.60 per unit. The most frugal water users pay $24.50 per unit. That's more than four times as much as the most prolific water users. Now, I don't have time to go into all the discussion about why this schedule was created. You would really need to have a public hearing of considerable extent for that. But the situation for the sewer fees is even more disadvantageous for the frugal water users. You really should have a special meeting to discuss these water and sewer rates, as you are going to spend enormous sums of money in the next five years for water projects and sewer projects. So, I strongly urge you to put such a special meeting on the table without anything else to distract you.
Next is Charles Little, and after Mr. Little will be Keith Parks. Next is Charles Little, and after Mr. Little will be Keith Parks.
I was going to talk about, a little bit about water, too, but he pretty much addressed some things that I was thinking about, too. So I have some other concerns that I have. During the election, almost all of you promised transparency and communication. So I think we kind of did the voters a disservice this year, especially on this 650,000 that's owed back to the Development Commission, when that man used the money to start some stuff up, and now they want that money back. I would like a full explanation of that sometime at the next council meeting. The other one that I am, really got a bug under me is this $3 million that supposedly is turned back to the state that we're supposed to get every year. We've got a lot of problems in this town. You guys know it. Everybody here knows it. That $3 million a year could go to fixing up the sewer plants, paving the roads, all that good stuff. So you've guys got a lot of work to do, but you need to be more transparent and communicate that to the people that are voting for you and electing you. You need to do that, because that's what you promised. That's what almost every one of you said on all the cards, and I probably got, I don't know, 50 pounds of card stock in my mailbox this election cycle. And of course, oh, those are your PACs, your PACs, but everybody knows, you know who puts that money into your PAC. You all do, and you just need to be honest about it. That's what we voted for. Y'all claim that you're Christian men, and when you're not telling the truth, that's the same as lying. And my mom had a saying, God rest her soul, "You'll go to hell for lying, same as you will for stealing." So if you're not telling the truth about what's coming out on those cards, you're stealing votes. Thank you very much. I look forward to the next council meeting.
Mr. Little, we appreciate you being here. As a statement of fact, I will point you to the state's budget, which has no line item award to the range for $3 million. So the $3 million that has been refused, or alleged to be refused, doesn't exist, never existed, and was never refused by this body. So nobody had anything to do with any monies that could have been granted to the city of Amarillo. And so it's unfortunate, but I will direct you in a statement of fact that that was a political maneuver, not a factual evidence of something that happened. And I agree with you. I think half truths are whole lies. So I think you hold us accountable, and we'll walk it out.
Well, I would like to see statements like that come out during the election cycle. When we are voting to change the city council to add two more people and rotate the turns so that we're coming in with a new council every two years, there was the statement that George Soros is going to buy a district in Amarillo to buy a seat on this council, when we all know those are seats at large. Now, that should have been addressed then, too.
Let me invite you to send an email to me. I'd be glad to schedule a meeting, sit down, and talk to you. There is certain things that I am in control of, very few things, one of which is myself, and one that I am not in control of at all is politics in its nature. And so we can agree, there's political maneuvering that is still going on. But I appreciate you for speaking, sir, and we welcome you back to speak again.
But I still say, when those lies come out, you need to stand up right then.
Understood, sir.
And say it.
Yeah.
Say it loud and proud.
Thank you, sir.
And if Keith Parks is not here, Mayor, that concludes the list of everyone that signed up in advance.
Thank you, Ms. City Secretary. I appreciate both the individuals that spoke, and would ask if I have anyone else here who'd like to offer public comment today. Ms. Cassie Green, if you'd come forward.
Thank you, guys. Welcome, Mr. Reed. My name is Cassie Green. I'm an Amarillo citizen. So I do want to thank you guys for having our town hall discussion open meeting today at 12:30. It was really good, very insightful. There's a couple of things that I was unable to address, and it's even more fitting to address it here, because it's more of a question to the councilmen. So that's concerning mud. I don't know what item it is today, but we're going to talk about it. So maybe in that discussion, these questions can be addressed. Okay, so why, okay, okay, okay. Why did we have these meetings, and even this meeting, after we've already voted it through, April 22nd? So that's my question on that. A, okay, and this is questions to the city manager, I would say, but Les, on April 22nd, Councilman Les Simpson asked if this, if the muds could be stopped, the question was asked, and then it was confirmed that they could be stopped. So my question is, why start something and pass it through with the intentions of stopping it? And really, that's my question, why? Why would we want to stop it? What are the things that would cause the councilmen, the city managers, to think that this is something we don't want to proceed with? Okay. And then police. Who's going to police these muds with this new population and this new intake of people? How are we going to police it? Because I believe the city's already short about 20%, 15%? I don't know what the percentage is, but how are we going to protect these people in these districts? Oh, and it needs to go on record. So there was some questions, some people said in the meeting, that we are in a housing shortage in the city of Amarillo. And then Jamie Haynes looked it up, and I looked it up, too, and we are not in a housing shortage in the city of Amarillo. So that just needs to be understood, or known, or discussed. Why the hurry on passing it on April 22nd? Why do we have to do that? Oh, and it was also brought to my attention that it was an individual developer sometime this summer who reached out to you guys to start muds. So why didn't we handle it on an individual basis? Why is it across the board, all of the ETJs are open to mud? It seems like something that could have been handled, you know, one-on-one. Thank you.
So, Ms. Cassie, we will have a discussion later with Aleah, and we'll address as many of those as we can. I'm probably going to invite you back to the discussion, so don't leave. Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Arb Nora Haliti. I am, I live in Amarillo, but I just want to offer a positive word in the midst of all the drama and serious issues. So I am originally from Kosovo, which is in Eastern Europe, and I came to the U.S. in 99. And I went from seeing the worst of humanity to the best of humanity in the American people. And I came to Amarillo because people decided to sponsor my family and I to start over, to kind of get our footing back and have faith again. So I want to remind people that there's always going to be problems. There's always going to be issues. But where we can really flip the script and reframe things as a whole is be solution-oriented, be abundant mindset. You know, take it upon yourself as an individual to be better, and then come up with solutions far more than you come up with problems. Because I am proud of Amarillo, and I'm proud to be here. And I want y'all to remember that we are good people, and we do care. And the way that the people took in my family, you know, when we had nothing, and we were so broken, and to be able to be restored, to be able to have courage again to stand up here and to remind y'all what it's all about. So that's what I wanted to share, and I'm proud of y'all, and I know it takes a lot to stand up here. And if it was easy, everyone would do it. You know what I'm saying? So it's not easy getting attacked. It's not easy coming, having people come at you left and right, when you don't even have the full story. So we could do and offer each other, is offer each other some grace. How about some kindness? How about living like Jesus does? Since we are such strong Christians as we proclaim as a city, show it. I'm tired of seeing grown adults, grown adults, right? I'm 30. I'm still, I'm an adult, but working on it. But grown adults that have put their blood, sweat, and tears into this community to turn around here and publicly defame someone, publicly come up with problems but no solutions, and to not take it upon yourself, because God gives us the authority, and to have authority over yourself, number one. How dare you try to have authority over someone else when you don't even have it for yourself? So moral of the story is power of the individual, number one. You come to the council with solutions. Everybody has problems. But where we can really come together and be strong as a city, because I truly believe in Amarillo with my whole heart, my whole heart, where we can really come together is join in solutions and having that abundant mindset, because everything is abundant. We can get through hard stuff. But where we can't get through hard stuff is pointing fingers, public defamation, and just outright childish behavior, outlandish, that is inappropriate. Bottom line is inappropriate as a city. So all in all, I'm a big supporter, and I will do what it takes to be that individual and lead by example, but also offer love, kindness, and strength, just like the Amarillo people offered my family and I.
Thank you, ma'am. Well said.
Thank you.
So this is Arb Nora, and we have to get your name right for the public record. Can you spell your last name for us?
Yeah. Okay, so it's Arb Nora, A-R-B-N-O-R-E, and then Haliti, H-A-L-I-T-I.
Exactly like it sounds.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'll give you a little fun fact. Arb Nora in Albanian means, I'm Albanian, by the way, and it means warrior of the light. And that's exactly what I'll do. No darkness will overtake anybody in Amarillo, because we all have that light, so.
Arb Nora, we appreciate you speaking.
Yes.
And setting a good example.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else here today who'd like to offer public comment? Yes, sir, Pedro.
Pedro Lemus, citizen Amarillo. I wanted to back up her comments. Again, I'm very fortunate to be of the age that I've seen a lot of you men grow, and I'm excited about what's ahead of us. I did want to have a little context to my question. I think I've addressed you, Cole, but on the parks and recs, is there a location where we can see how the funds are being spread, or, you know, what the order is? And then also being in real estate investing to address some of the things that you said. We don't have a housing shortage. We have inventory of houses. We have an affordable housing shortage, and that's one of those things that, you know, I'm, as an investor, try to address, and just the cost of material these days is making it very difficult. So I think that's what they may be talking about. But anyway, my kudos to you guys. Congratulations. Good luck to Mr. Sherlin in the runoff. But again, just attending, because I've served publicly before on building and committing the Planning and Zoning Committee, but just attending to hear some of the agenda items as well. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Lemus, we appreciate your service. I know you volunteer in the multiple capacities, and so thank you for speaking here today. Staff would ask if maybe we could look to a dashboard for Parks and Rec, something that we could put out there that's a little bit more forward-facing for people to be able to see not only events and recreation, things we're doing around the community, because we do have events in the park that we want to promote, but then also the monies that are being invested. So as council budgets those this next year, if we could publicize those on the website and through, oh, I always say it wrong, innovation and engagement, E and I? I and E?
O E I.
O E I? Okay. Thank you, guys. Anyone else offering public comment here today? Yes, sir. We'll start with Mr. Adair.
I was going to read a bit of an article here. This should have been emailed to all of y'all earlier today by Fisher. Amarillo Police Trade Old Harleys For New Ones At No Cost To The City. Amarillo's Police Motorcycle Unit Underwent A Major Upgrade In 2016 Replacing Its Decades- Old Harley-Davidson Bikes With Brand-New Ones At No Additional Cost To The City. APD Traded In Their Old Ones In A Budget-Neutral Swap. Now, in 2025, we are talking about spending $248,000 on seven new bikes at an average cost of $35,000 each. Online research puts a new police Harley at $25,000. This sounds like typical city staff saying, "Let's do what Dallas, Fort Worth, and other big cities do. The problem is, what works in big cities doesn't always work in Amarillo." We are talking about switching from Harleys to BMWs when we got Harleys for free in 2016. You're talking about going to Dallas to buy a foreign-made bike when we don't even have a dealership or a service center here in Amarillo. Most of you may know, some may not, I was a professional freestyle dirt bike rider for eight years. I rode a Kawasaki. I didn't take it to the Honda dealership. Doing so would void the warranties on that. After talking to several Harley dealers before this meeting today, they confirmed that that is exactly what will happen with these BMWs if they are not serviced by a licensed BMW center, of which we do not have one in Amarillo. I'll wrap up with this. In '23, I ran for council with all of you, except for Tim Reed. All of you and myself all said it was important to create and keep jobs in Amarillo. Buying foreign-made bikes in Dallas does not do this. I encourage you to pull this item off the agenda and do more research. Heck, we may even get bikes for free like we did in 2016, because shopping local shouldn't mean a trip to Dallas. I know most of what this council does is spend money, and when we do that, we should have two priorities: buying American and buying local. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we can, we can address that, so I can have chief address it to you directly, or we can address it in council. So, Mr. Path, do you have a preference on how we answer a few of those questions?
City council will probably pull it off the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay, we'll do that, then. Do I have anyone else who'd like to offer public comment? Mr. Fisher.
Name's Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. Congratulations to all who won the election. We're talking about transparency. I'll continue that topic. Transparency in politics is like Wi-Fi. Everyone says they have it, but when you really need it, the connection drops. During every election cycle in this city, one word comes up over and over: transparency. It's the political equivalent to saying you like puppies and apple pie. Everyone agrees with it, but now it's time to move beyond campaign promises and actually connect the community to its government. And here's the solution. So we're talking about solutions here. I've got one. Potter County, right here in our own city, already posts their check register online. So does Amarillo ISD, so does Canyon ISD. These public entities are saying, "Here's how we're spending money. Take a look." And they're not just saying it, they're showing it. But the city of Amarillo, no check register, no public accounting, no real-time window into our tax dollars and how they're being spent. We deserve access to the full check register, just like other government entities in our region already do. Here's what I ask: pass an ordinance to direct the city to post the full check register online with simple format: date, vendor, amount, and online with simple format: date, vendor, amount, and most importantly, a general ledger category, so we can tell the expenses apart, like for streets, salaries, EDC. Then we can do, we can let the sleuths do some of your job. You guys don't have time for this. Let the people that are passionate about it, somebody that's good at numbers and databases, let them mine the data and point it out. We would have, I would have found that range money a lot quicker, maybe when they made the first payment, and maybe we could have stopped it. And so, maybe we could have avoided, maybe we'd only be asking for, what, $250 back instead of what we're trying to get back. Post the most recent five years of data, releasing one fiscal year at a time, but going forward, do month-to-month. At the end of each month, post the check register so we can look at it, so we can stop it in almost real time, 30 days out. This isn't about politics, this isn't about gotchas. This isn't, this is about restoring trust through action. When you open the books, you open the doors to civic engagement and accountability. Transparency builds trust. Let's not just talk about it, let's lead with it. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, we appreciate you speaking. I'll take you up on your offer. So would direct staff to put it up for a discussion item on the next council, what it would look like for us to post a public check registry for all departments, and then maybe discuss what the downfalls, potentials, whatever it might be, for us to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Glad to oblige. Anyone else got something they'd like to offer here for public comment? Yes, ma'am, if you come forward.
I'm Jackie Payne, and I do live in the city of Amarillo. I would like to offer some rebuttal to the gentleman who spoke about the police officers' motorcycles. I currently happen to be participating in the very popular Amarillo Citizens Police Academy. It's been very rewarding, and just recently, we spent one evening with our Amarillo motorcade or motorcycle policemen. And as this says on your agenda item, this is a scheduled replacement of units, and it lists all of the numbers which have reached their useful life. You guys made a commitment to our Amarillo Police Department, and it has been very well received. It's resulted in increased participation and interest in the academy. That's what we need in Amarillo. Our police officers on these motorcycles need the best equipment. We did that with the police cars. We've got new ones, we've got a new system for that. Those police officers need the best equipment. I encourage you to keep that item on the agenda and to approve it. There is no reason to allow our police officers to be using inadequate equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. We appreciate the comment. Do I have anyone else here today who would like to offer public comment? Okay, I think that wraps up public comment. I thank you for everyone who spoke here today. Look forward to continuing our engagement. We are going to move into section eight, our consent agenda. Do I have anything council would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
I'll move to pull 8G, so we can discuss that, we can get chief up and discuss the decision there.
I have a motion to pull item 8G. No, I'm sorry, I don't have a motion. I see that you want to pull 8G. Do I have anything else that anyone else would like to pull off? Okay, would ask for a motion on the consent agenda excluding 8G.
Okay, I move. Oh, go ahead. You're fine.
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as stated, all but 8G.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on consent, gentlemen? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Let's move into item 8G. Mr. Path or Mr. Deputy, is it good if we have chief come up and explain this one?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And then Donnie may be able to weigh in as well from the fleet perspective.
Real good. Chief Johnson, how you doing today, sir?
I'm good, thank you, council. Is this on? I'll tell you right now, I don't know anything about being on a motorcycle. I've ridden motorcycles in the past, and I've been a cop in the past, but I said a long time ago, I'm not going to do both at the same time. So, I've tried to distance myself from that. What I do know is us moving to BMW motorcycles was not something we took lightly. This is something we've been looking at for a period of time, and this actually was brought to us by the motors officers, the men that are out there riding the motorcycles every day. A lot of the, a lot of this started at one of our police rodeos, the Iron Horse Shootout that we have every year, which is a skills competition between law enforcement, police motorcyclists across the, actually across the nation. We hosted one of these, we have our officers go to these, and one of the benefits of it is not only is it allowing them to practice their skills, it allows them to see other techniques, other skills and other equipment that other agencies are using across the United States. We have been with Harley-Davidson for many, many years. We've had a good relationship with them. My motors officers are the ones that came to me and asked if we could look at going to these BMW motorcycles. The bottom line for me, again, because I'm not on the motorcycle, the bottom line for me was that my officers that are riding them every day are telling me how they're safer, they're more maneuverable, the braking is better, all of the things that make them safer and make the public safer out there is what they came to me with. Mr. Harder could probably speak to the actual financing part of this. That's where we're at. I've actually got Lieutenant Pennington from our motors unit coming over here if we have more detailed questions, but that's where this came from, is the officers out there riding them every day are the ones that brought this to us with a presentation and showed us the differences.
I might also add, too, if you don't mind, Mayor, there was, during those discussions, and they've been taking place for well over a year, when we were discussing with the motors unit of what they wanted to do when we see these replacements come in, there's a couple of issues that they were looking forward, I guess you could say, the road kings, which they ride now, are no longer going to be in production. The electric glides are also no longer going to be in production as well from Harley. So, there's a different model that they use now, that they would be using for their police bikes. The BMWs also have a different octane of fuel that they allow. You can put 85-octane fuel in a BMW, which all of our pumps that we have at the city, well, we can dispense that. A Harley has to have 91 or above octane in it, and I know that for a fact, I ride myself, and that does void your warranty if you don't put that in there. So that's always been a little bit of a challenge as well. So, there were some other things, but I think the biggest thing, and I talked to some of them today on the phone, and I've been in communication with them throughout the process, is mainly safety that the BMW offers right now, and also the different braking systems that it has, acceleration and things like that. There's a lot of units that are using these. I will tell you, also spoke to a mechanic as well, there are, the life of these BMWs, you can get more out of them before you have to replace them than what we were seeing with the Harleys. Now, that's yet to be seen for us, but the Fort Worth Police Department believes that to be true as well. And, let's see, there was one other piece, the pricing on that is, when we're looking at standard pricing for MSRP, that does not include all the outfit charges that go in. So you look comparatively between the Harley and the BMW, when they're completely outfitted for police use, they're relatively the same in price.
The upfitting is another thing that we saw as an advantage. A lot of the things you see on our police bikes, we do ourselves. We mount that stuff, they don't come that way. The BMW motorcycles, I understand, do come that way. Is that correct, Donnie?
That's correct. They do. They do the upfitting at BMW. And one other thing, too, there is a local service provider for preventative maintenance that is approved by BMW. Now, warranty work would have to go to the Metroplex to be done. I know that one of the things that the motors unit told me is that the Fort Worth PD, who's using them for quite a while, has seen one bike that has had warranty work turned in out of their entire fleet over the past few years, so they know that the reliability is there as well for that. So, again, this was a request, chief is right, this is a request that came from the motors unit, probably about a little over a year ago, when we started doing all the research. We've done a lot of, a lot of back and forth, a lot of discussions about this with PD, and we certainly want to get them what they, what they're requesting. We try to always entertain that every time we're replacing the fleet.
Councilman?
Well, so what I would just reiterate, so it's fair to say that, I mean, I think everybody on council would, if we have an option, we would rather stay local, we'd rather buy American. I think everybody on here agrees with that. However, when we have our motor division requesting different bikes for safety, for maneuverability, for all the things, obviously, this council has been public safety first in that we listen to you guys on the equipment, on everything that we can do to outfit you guys with the best equipment. I think that's where it comes from. But we've looked at all of this, like you said, the MSRP that was given before was not an outfitted bike. The BMW versus the Harley, they're virtually the same. So we've looked at it, and apples to apples, the motor division would prefer the BMW, and it tends to test out better. Is that fair?
That's correct. Anything else, councilman?
Nope. Chief, thank you. I made two phone calls on this, because I do care about our local provider, and that's a longstanding contract that they've had. I acknowledge that value, but I care more about performance, safety, and we say we back our blue, I mean, we back our blue in equipment, in support morale and also in our budget. And so, we felt like it was really your choice or your department's choice, and we should take your guidance on this. The individual that really didn't want to move away from the Harley-Davidson did tell me, like, I gotta admit, you know, the performance on this for what we do for a living, it's better on the BMW side. He said, now, if you ask me which one I look cooler on, he definitely thinks he looks cooler on the Harley-Davidson. And so, I think that, for me, I'm making a decision based on performance, and it looks black and white to you guys sometimes when you're reading that agenda. Why don't we keep the money here local? Why don't we this? Why don't we that? This is a great discussion of how we do want to be transparent and continue to show everybody we're doing business in public. We made a good business decision here to put this on the agenda with a lot of thoughtfulness, some homework and some good consideration. So, hope you guys see that. It's money well spent, and it's at the behest of our motors, and those are the guys that are putting their life on the line out there every day for you.
I would like to reiterate, we had a great relationship with Harley-Davidson, the local Harley-Davidson. This had nothing to do with any kind of problem there. This was strictly about the officer's safety and what they saw as a better form of technology for them to ride.
Right. Well, I would just encourage anybody else who's out there like me, whose wife won't allow you to get a Harley-Davidson, like, one day, go get it. I'm going to get one, like, so we can, we can keep the sales up here local. But in this particular transaction, it made more, more sense to.
American, I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
To this, we had also, I would, it would not credit our fleet department enough to think about, to talk about this, because Jason Jupe, who's our superintendent of fleet, came to us, and he said, we're actually in conversations with BMW now to try to get some mechanics that we have here in our shop certified to work on the BMWs. So now, I don't know what the end result is that going to be, but I think that's, you know, recognized that we want to be able to maintain those here locally, and they have the people that could do that, if it's minor repairs, things like that. So, doing everything we can to try to keep all that local.
We appreciate you guys. Thank you all for answering questions. Council would entertain a motion on 8G, please.
I move to approve 8G as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second on 8G. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 8G passes with a vote of 5-0. Moving right along, we'll move into discussion. We'll try to get through most of our discussion items before we take a break, and then we'll come back for what is a short or shorter non-consent. Council, item 9A, do I have anything that council has questions on before we move into discussion? Okay. Item 9B, municipal utility districts, otherwise a MUD. Miss Aleah Vincent, thank you for joining us again. We thank you for leading the town hall earlier. Please proceed with your presentation, and then we'll get to some questions.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, Mayor, council members, and Councilmember Reed. Very nice to meet you. This is a great opportunity, I think, for us to have a little more discussion, education about MUDs. I know I was here April 8th, when we had a really robust discussion about the policy, which you then adopted on April 22nd. But, you know, it's always a good idea to continue this discussion, and we did have a really great discussion with many of the members of your community earlier this afternoon. So I'm happy to frame this up a little bit, and of course, take any questions from council. So just to set the stage, this presentation is generally about municipal utility districts, but just to remind you, especially for those who are new to the dais today, that the policy that was adopted relates to MUDs being created in the extraterritorial jurisdiction only, right? So you have the city's corporate limits, you have the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, which extends one mile out beyond the city's corporate limits, and the policy is focused on that area only. Today, we'll talk a little more generally about MUDs, but I know that question came up today, and so I wanted to make sure just to frame that to the group. All right, let me see if I'm, oh, good. All right, the clicker's working, that's a great start. All right, so just to begin with, what is a municipal utility district? So, to many of you, this will be a refresher and not new information, but a MUD is a political subdivision of the state of Texas, so this is a governmental entity. It's created over a specific geographic area, and it has limited purposes. So unlike a home rule city, which can do anything unless the state legislature says no, you can't, a MUD can only do what the state legislature says yes it can. And it really functions in core infrastructure areas: water, sewer, drainage, roads, parks in certain counties of the state. And it is a way for those types of municipal services to be provided either in an area where it's not in a city, or in an area where the city maybe wants that development, but it wants the development to bear the costs on its own. And this is a pretty consistent theme that we'll talk about today and that you've heard in our previous discussions, a way to ensure that the costs of that infrastructure are borne by the people who will benefit from it, and not, remember, not at the cost of the residents and constituents of the city, because we're focused strictly on the ETJ. All right, so MUDs, they're very prolific in the state of Texas. We have more than 2,000 special districts. There are a lot of different types of special districts. MUDs are the tool that is most commonly used for land development, especially residential land development at this point. It's very well-regulated, very clearly regulated by the TCEQ, and is an extremely effective credit when those bonds are issued into the market. So the MUD market in the state of Texas really is a key factor in how the state of Texas has really been managing with pretty extreme growth. We were talking earlier today about the pace of growth in the state of Texas, you know, more than 1,500 people adding to the state population every single day. MUDs have been a key tool that have been used to meet housing need, and to meet housing need at more reasonable prices than you otherwise would be able to get. MUDs are commonly utilized as well with respect to creating master-planned communities or larger developments with a lot of amenities. All right, so what do MUDs do? We talked about those core functions. They construct and operate water, sewer, drainage, they construct public roads, they do have supplemental services. There was a good question by Ms. Green earlier about police. Now, MUDs do have the statutory authority to hire police officers or to contract with the sheriff's office or the constable's office so that they can have additional patrols if they want more than the emergency response services offered by the county. In our policy that y'all adopted a couple of weeks ago, firefighting and police services are not included in the services that the city would provide unless and until the city chose to contract for that separately. MUDs do have the ability to provide trash services as well. You'll recall that in the policy that was adopted, it did include the city providing trash service at a one-and-a-half times rate. So, the, when you hear us talking about a vehicle, right, what we mean by that is that a MUD is a governmental entity, but it is providing a very specific function with respect to allowing the financing for the payment of public infrastructure. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but really, what we're talking about is, as a governmental entity, that MUD has the ability to issue tax-exempt bonds to pay for water, sewer, drainage, roads, infrastructures at very low interest rates that you get for tax-exempt debt. MUDs have a lot of the types of powers and authority that you would expect other governmental entities would have: the right to contract, to levy a tax, to charge relevant fees. So, one of the common misperceptions is that MUDs are not heavily regulated. We'll say, as someone who works on both sides of MUDs, oftentimes representing MUDs, they are extremely well-regulated, quite heavily regulated, and truly at every level. are extremely well regulated, quite heavily regulated and truly at every level. So not only can MUDs only exercise the powers that are granted to them by the state legislature, but you'll see that plans for public infrastructure, they're all going to be subject to the city codes and ordinances. That's also very explicit in the policy that was adopted. And, and remember, we're talking about ETJ MUDs right now and normally the city wouldn't, you know, you, you would have the ability to control a great deal in ETJ, but only if the land stays in the ETJ. I think all of you are aware of pretty significant changes to state law last legislative session that allows landowners to file a petition with a city to opt out of the ETJ 100% at their own discretion and after 45 days pass, then that's what happens. And so a method that many cities are using to continue to have the ability to fully regulate within their ETJs is to work to, to conditionally consent to the creation of districts and make sure that the quality of infrastructure is what they want it to be. All right, so the infrastructure is regulated by the TCEQ. EPA requirements are also applicable. So you see MUDs regulated federally, state, at the local level. MUDs are subject to TCEQ feasibility rules and what that means is that before a MUD can issue debt, it has to, it has to go to the TCEQ. It also goes to the attorney general's office and it has to get approval to issue that debt. And that debt is, is issued at a very conservative ratio. So that developer not only has to advance the costs of building all of the public infrastructure, but they also have to advance the, the process and cost of building enough above ground taxable value, so houses, rooftops, structures that can actually be taxed, and they have to get that done. And they have to have a value that's 10 times the level of debt that the district can then issue. So if you have $10 million worth of taxable value in the district, only $1 million worth of debt can be issued. So there's a lot of responsibility on the developer to make sure that they are coming through and that the development is a success before, before they get paid back. MUDs are compliant with the Open Meetings Act, the Public Information Act, all of the nepotism, anti-bribery, all of those kinds of rules that public officials follow are also applicable to MUDs and the directors that serve on those MUDs. And one important point also is that MUDs have to comply with all of the public bidding requirements and so all of those infrastructure projects have to be built in accordance with that. There are two different methods to create MUDs. They can be created either by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, or by the Texas Legislature. So if the MUD is physically in a city's corporate limits or in its ETJ, city, the city would have to give its consent. So in the policy that you adopted, the focus is solely in this ETJ ring and the city would have to give its consent to the creation. It would also have to give its consent before any annexations were made to expand the boundaries. But as I talked about before, the legislative changes last session that allow a landowner to remove themselves from the ETJ, if they want to, leave us in a place where if a developer truly wants to create a MUD in the ETJ, they're gonna do it, right? They're either gonna do it with you or without you. And the without you is where they opt out of the ETJ and then they simply proceed with doing a MUD on their own, but without the city having any ability to oversee, regulate, and hold them to the higher standard of quality of infrastructure. All right, so in this last point here, in connection with the city's consent, that is really the opportunity for the city to negotiate all of the terms by which they would provide service that would include a development agreement, a utility agreement, and a strategic partnership agreement, and all of that is done upfront so that you know exactly what you're getting. You know, I'm looking, looking at the questions that, that were received during public comment and, you know, one of the questions was, you know, why, why is this policy being done kind of across the board? And, and it's, it's true that a city can simply look at individual requests for MUDs and consent to those on a case by case basis. That is correct. The policy gives guidance, gives clear direction across the board as to what the city's expectations are and so that everyone who applies can be treated fairly. So that is how the policy is, is different than a one by one, case by case scenario. And of course, as you proceed, the policy is a living document. Council can make modifications, you can make amendments. And also, while you have a policy in effect, there's an application and a petition process. You would have to actually approve the creation consent for each and every one of those MUDs. So your council, whether it's this year, whether it's five years from now, any creation or any annexation for that matter would have to come back to this body so that you could consider it, make sure all of your questions are answered before you grant that approval. Okay, so a MUD is governed by a five-member board. Initially, that board is appointed by the TCEQ. If it's created by the legislature, those five members might be listed in the legislation, but you initially have a temporary board. Later on, the board will go through the standard elections process, so you have staggered four year terms in even numbered years. And, and so the eligibility requirements are for the directors, they either have to own property or they have to be residents in the district and be qualified voters. And so, you know, once you have that first house on the ground, that person, assuming they are over 18 and a resident of the state of Texas and not a felon, they are able to run for office and, and join their, their board. Like city council, that board of directors really acts as the governing body and they're held to public official standards like you all are. The MUD typically employs a number of professional consultants such as an engineer, an auditor, a bookkeeper, a lawyer. They will have the group of expert consultants to help them ensure that they're doing their work in compliance with state and federal law. So how does the developer work in all of this? The developer initially is the landowner, right? So the developer might buy a few hundred acres and then they want to create a development. It is that developer that is coming forward with the application and petition to create the MUD and they're coming forward first to the city to get that consent and then going to the TCEQ with a pretty significant application process to get the TCEQ to approve it. So it starts by landowner focused and what's important about that is that sometimes there's a little bit of a misperception that you might wake up one day and accidentally realize you're in a MUD. That is not the way it works. So it begins with the landowner and the landowner is making that petition and, and then they are driving the pace of the development of the district based on their land plan. And they are really kind of public-private partnership with the MUD. They are facilitating the development, they are advancing all of the costs of construction and operation. And so that's their obligation to the district is to advance all of those costs and it is significant. And only once they have delivered on their obligations, both in their reimbursement agreement to the district, but also to the TCEQ standards, will they then be entitled to reimbursement. And so what this does is it puts the risk and obligation on the developer and if they don't deliver, then they don't get paid back and that just goes on hold until they do deliver. And, and until then, the district is waiting for them to perform. That reimbursement can be limited by TCEQ rules if, if there's a failure to follow all of the requirements in terms of competitive bidding, et cetera, and the TCEQ does look very carefully at all of that. So taxes in a MUD. So when you have land that is within a MUD, the MUD does have the ability to levy taxes. Typically, they will begin by levying a tax that will pay for operations and maintenance of the district. And then once that MUD has issued bonds, then it will take a number of the pennies of their tax rate and allocate that to pay debt service, to pay the principal and interest payments on that debt. And while the debt that is issued by MUDs is pledged by an unlimited tax pledge, right, which is to say, once they've issued bonds, they are gonna pay the bondholders, right, regardless of what happens, the TCEQ does regulate that you may not issue bonds if it would cause your tax rate to go over a certain amount. And locally in your area, that amount is a dollar. And so you have a dollar maximum and that begins with your, your very first application to the TCEQ for your first bond issue, but it's that exact same standard that's utilized for every subsequent application and issue to ensure that the district has enough value that it would not have to spike its tax rate to support additional bonds. And so it's a, it's a very carefully regulated process to ensure that the district is only issuing bonds when it truly has enough value on the ground to support paying those bonds back at a steady tax rate. And in fact, what typically is a declining tax rate, typically the way MUDs work is that they will begin with their highest rate, so in this case, maybe we'd call that $1, and they would slowly bring that down over time as debt is paid off and they are left only with operations to have to pay for. So I'd mentioned before a reimbursement agreement. A very key cornerstone to the district and developer relationship is a reimbursement agreement that gets adopted very early on. This is the reimbursement agreement that obligates the developer to pay for these costs upfront and then articulates when it is that the district would then be obligated to pay them back. So many of these points are repeats of what we said previously. All right, so benefits of a MUD. One of the primary benefits of a MUD, whether it is inside of a city or outside of the city in the ETJ, of course, in your case, we're strictly talking about the ETJ, but it does allow growth to strictly pay for itself. So if you have a developer that determines they would like to create a district, they come to the city, they get your consent, they go to the TCEQ and they get it created, those individuals who are moving into the district, there is a notice to purchaser that is required to be filed in the property records, letting them know the district exists, what the maximum bond authorization is, what the tax rates are, and then those individuals who are buying in are getting, are getting notices of that, both at the beginning when they go under contract to purchase and again when they close. And so it allows the people who are choosing, you know, to vote with their feet by going to move there, to know what they're getting and to ensure that they want to proceed with that. It allows the city to ensure and the MUD to ensure that the quality of the infrastructure will be at a very high standard. In this case, your policy requires all of that infrastructure to be built to the city's standards. A MUD does allow for local control. The MUD will be the smallest unit of government that the people will live in and they will be able to elect their own board of directors. The MUD is eligible under current federal rules to issue tax exempt financing. I think all of you are aware that tax exempt financing is one of the considerations that Congress is considering for all governments, not just MUDs, but, but MUDs have the same benefits that other governmental entities do to be able to issue low interest rates. Benefits of a MUD also include pricing of the housing. And, you know, I, I can't speak to what the current housing market is in the city of Amarillo or its ETJ, but what I can say is that the public infrastructure to serve those homes must be constructed when you're doing a new development and it's a question of how are you paying for that? You're either paying for it by adding it onto the top of that lot price, which translates into a higher house price, or you can utilize a tool like a MUD to keep that house price lower and then have the cost of that paid back over time through taxes. And so that is a very powerful tool that's been available in the state to keep pricing in Texas much more affordable than it is in many other parts of the country. You look at other places like California where the cost of housing is off the charts and Texas has really done an incredible thing by coupling growth with still housing prices that are more affordable than other parts of the country. I think we'd all like to see them cheaper than they are currently, but for the reasons that one of your, one of your commentators stated earlier, the challenges around labor costs and material costs and inflation, those all contribute to the cost of housing, but this is a tool that keeps that housing price cheaper than it otherwise would be if you were to create that housing outside of that structure. And there was a question, I'm going back to one of Ms. Green's questions about, you know, could a MUD be stopped? Why would you want to stop it? And I just want to make sure for, for council, I think that the nature of the comment that I was trying to provide back when I spoke in April was that every time there is a request for the creation, for a consent to be granted, council will have the ability to review the entire package and make your decision at that time to grant that approval. I'm not sure how you'll feel five years from now or what information is in that packet, right? But it's more that it will come back to council each and every time for your approval, which I think is an important part of you being able to, to do your job. And I think that answers all of the questions that were posed and that brings me to the end. So council, mayor, I'm happy to stop and take any questions that you have.
Well, I sincerely appreciate you coming back to Amarillo again and your continued work on this. I would start by saying, I think I've been working on this for over a year, probably now, a little more than that, Floyd. So this isn't anything new and it's not something where we, we hurried to get it out and voted on it in two weeks. And then, you know, originally kind of started pushing through a lot of the campaign season of just noticing people, you know, for three months previous to the vote, that this is something that has a lot of benefits and then educating council along the way. So you've explained it very well. I think we probably still have maybe some concerns that don't relate to the full understanding and so at an attempt to, to get through individualized concerns, we're gonna see if we can keep you at the microphone.
Sure.
And then maybe address a few of these, but I, I'm gonna open it back up to council again and just see, do you guys have any specific questions now kind of going through this multiple times? Or Tim, for being maybe the first presentation.
This is the first presentation. I think I understand it well, but the city, the city itself can't declare an area a MUD, right? The developer has to make that application.
So that's a very good question. So the city can't create the MUD, you're correct. The city's role is merely to consent to the request for creation and that has to come from a developer and it is either the TCEQ or the state legislature that is actually creating that governmental entity.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
Anything further, Councilman? Okay. Any other questions for, yes, sir?
Yeah, a couple of things, and I appreciate you coming back. I said it on most of that meeting today and I think you dug into some things and there were some things that were not MUD related to our discussion, but MUD in general and those types of things. I think you helped cover a lot of ground in that today. You mentioned in the meeting today, and I think you mentioned before, and I may have missed something, that there really hasn't been any default on the MUD tax exempt bonds since this has started. But I thought you mentioned there was another type of funding or component that there has been some issues with?
Yeah. Well, so that's, that's an excellent question. So MUDs in the early 80s, there was significant additional regulation with respect to the economic feasibility requirements that have since the early 80s made MUDs extremely, an extremely good credit, right? Where they're not defaulting and that's because, prior to that, there were some defaults because there weren't the same rules in place that made it so that so much taxable value had to be on the ground before you could issue debt, all right? And so it's been an extremely popular credit. It sells in the market, it has relatively low tax rates and, excuse me, interest rates when it's sold into the market. And so it has been viewed as a very safe, you know, bond to invest in and a lot of folks are invested in that, right? A lot of our, in, you know, retirement accounts are even invested in bonds that include MUDs because it's a very safe credit. Not all issuers have the same level of economic feasibility requirements. And the one that I was talking about earlier today that doesn't have the same requirements is PIDs, Public Improvement Districts, which do not have the same rigorous standard with respect to having to have the taxable value in place prior to debt being issued. So one of the questions that arose in discussion was, well, why MUDs, right? Because there are a lot of different types of entities out there, right? And every different, you know, alphabet soup you can throw together, there's dozens of them. Some of them have, you know, specific limited purposes that wouldn't accomplish everything that you normally would need to see in a development, but others either don't have the same kind of regulation or they don't have, maybe because of that, they don't have as, as good of a, as good of a marketability and they end up selling at higher interest rates because they are riskier bonds, whereas I think the MUD industry in the state of Texas has been extremely successful really over the last four decades in proving that when you buy MUD bonds, you know, that those MUD when you buy MUD bonds, you know, that those MUD bond payments get paid.
And then the other thing is, and I don't know how you define a housing shortage, you know, whether, I mean, I guess you have a certain amount of inventory, but I don't know, so I can't really tell with that, but from what I'm hearing, I guess people would probably say, there may be a shortage of housing that you, the word you use is more attainable. I mean, you know, most houses, if you look now, it's 300, 400, 500,000 or more to get into a house that maybe just five or 10 years ago was half that cost. So it's kind of pricing a lot of people out of the market, and I guess this is, intrinsic to this, is the feasibility that it does make its way for housing that can have a lower price point, so opening up for more individuals to be able to qualify that may not be able to in the existing market.
Yeah, I couldn't have said that better. That's exactly right.
Yeah. And then, so on the city side, who is our, Andrew, are you a point person on, or who's the point person?
It's going to be in the planning department, so Emily Kohler and her team.
So as this moves forward, if people in the community, because I, and I may have asked, could we stop it? And I think what I meant to say if I'd said that was, we can change it. I mean, it can be changed at any point in time, and as we learn more about it, there may be reason to change it, but if anything is coming up that we need to look at, then Emily Kohler would be the contact person to go through, whether you're a developer or someone else that says, I've got concerns about this, or what about this part, to be able to answer questions.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. And then one other thing, it just seems to me, and the other benefit, it seems, is that it just encourages larger development. I mean, if we do have growth in industry here, or we are attracting industry and we need a large amount of housing, the current rate, you know, Amarillo's just never been one to build a whole lot of spec houses and just say, well, let's go build, you know, 100 houses out here and hope they sell. It's been more, a little bit more planned and deliberate, which I think sometimes may contrive the price up a little bit, or just make that not available, but it seems like the general trend has been, this is an encouragement to encourage builders to build a lot more units than they may if they didn't have the power of this tool.
Right, I really think that it impacts the density of development that can be built. If you don't have, if you don't have an entity like this that can really be the public infrastructure provider, oftentimes you'll see extremely large lots where maybe there is a domestic well and a septic tank, but, you know, one acre lots, you're not getting density and you're not getting a very large increase in lot count. You're also looking at more expensive housing because you're needing to be able to afford to buy a full lot in that case, as opposed to maybe, you know, a full acre as opposed to maybe a 60-foot or even a 50-foot, you know, kind of standard housing unit.
Well, I guess the advantage of the density is if we do annex them, you're generating a whole lot more property tax value out of that than if there was not things to encourage them to build a more dense neighborhood or subdivision or whatever it may be.
Right, that's correct. And so if the city does decide to annex a MUD that it's in, that is in its ETJ, again, that would be pursuant to the strategic partnership agreement, that would be an exhibit to the development agreement, all of that we would work out upfront, but the city would be annexing a higher density area that is more consistent, I think, with what happens inside the city, and also with the quality of infrastructure that your, that your fine public works team that I saw up here today, that they would expect it to have.
And I guess the one final thing is, it's still up to the council to determine if annexation would occur.
That is correct.
And I thought when I hear you generally say, that annexation generally does not occur until most, if not all, the debt has been paid off?
So the dissolution, well, all right, so annexation in two different ways. So the city's annexation of the district typically does not occur, if it occurs at all, until the MUD has paid off its debt. The other type of annexation that we're talking about is that if that district wants to get bigger and annex into the district, it would have to come back to council for that approval of the annexation into the district. So we've got two different ways that we're talking about annexation today.
So, but the benefit for the city in annexing it is bringing that property tax value onto our rolls, it would not be there. Now, we would be losing the 50% upcharge on water and sewer, but I guess what a council has to determine at that time is it, is it an economic advantage to the city and our taxpayers to bring that on, or if there's not an economic advantage, then there's no requirement for us to annex the land unless we, the city and the city council and the city staff feel there's a benefit.
That's exactly right. So the strategic partnership agreement will state that it is purely at the city's option, whether or when to actually annex. And so, you know, there will be some standards around making sure that reimbursements are paid back before the annexation would occur, but the city would not be forced to annex and could decide to never annex, or to wait until all of the debt was paid off and it was confident that the financial benefit of adding those taxable, you know, taxable values outweighed, you know, the benefit that you might receive for utility rates.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yeah, just one thing. Aleah, thank you again for doing the town hall. I think that was very beneficial. You brought up a great point in there that I don't, I think maybe we're missing, or not we, but the public, is a developer can actually petition T C E Q and develop their own MUD, correct?
Right, so, so in the ETJ, if a developer just wanted to go their own way, they would go through this ETJ opt-out process, which is pretty darn fast, right? You submit the petition, 45 days, go by, bam, out of the ETJ, and then they would simply proceed with going to the T C E Q.
So by developing and adopting our own MUD policy, we have a little bit more control over what is going to happen in our ETJ, therefore, if annexation does take place, it's more to our standards and it's what we would prefer, correct?
That is correct.
That's a huge benefit. So I think a lot of people are missing that and think that this is something bad, or, and again, we, we're, it all comes to council, whoever the council is at the time, to approve or disapprove it, but on the, along the same lines, a developer can just bypass us completely, 45 days, they develop their own. This is way better because we get to put forth our standards, right?
Yeah, I think, I think it's really important to focus on that, and I think there's sometimes confusion about corporate limits, ETJ, unincorporated, and sometimes a little bit of a misunderstanding as to how much control a city has. So the city controls within its corporate limits, and the city has a certain amount of control over its ETJ, but only if the land stays in the ETJ. And, and the legislature really has, has kind of a continued trajectory of wanting to limit city control in its ETJ, right? So we kind of see this over the different legislative sessions, and, and so now, as you said, by choosing to engage in this and set out a policy and really kind of incentivize developers to want to work with you as opposed to just going their own way, it does give the city the ability to have a lot more control, whereas otherwise, you could have no control.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I would offer, I think the one thing we're not talking about here that is very impactful, so we're one of the largest water rights holders in the state. This is a template for us to engage through trade and through capitalism with our developers to show that we have value, and there are things we want, there are things we need, we don't want to inherit your problems, so the big bad developer in the room that'll put in cheap pipe, not take care of the roads, and then hand it over to the city later is a deal that we definitely want to avoid. The way we do that is we engage in a trade where we're selling water, we're selling sewer and we're selling trash services, and what are we getting in return? We're getting you to abide by this template where every person that buys in this development knows that this is my tax rate that's going to the MUD, I don't pay city taxes, but I get sewer and water, so I don't have to live in less dense housing, I don't have to have a well and septic. And so water really is the key in this negotiation, but it's a business deal, it's a transaction, and it relies on capitalism and free market. It doesn't rely on government control, or, you know, I would say the government leverage of spending monies that it doesn't have, hoping that something would show up later in a market that could be speculative. So it transfers risk over to those that are wanting the reward, which is your developer. It allows for the developer to mitigate their costs, to create that attainable or affordable housing limit that they need by financing some of the cost of that home and infrastructure for long-term payout and doing it through a bond. So I think we're saying it rightly, and we're explaining it very, very well, but to put a pin in it, the one thing that changes, if you're outside of the corporate limits of the city, I have the ability to engage with you, council does, because we have water that you need. Otherwise, you can go form your own MUD, but you've got to put in your own water treatment plant, your own wastewater treatment plant, and you have to manage those facilities just like we do for you in that tax rate, so this way or in that rate-pay system. This way, we're able to cost revenue, the cost to get out to those individuals, and to incentivize their willingness to come into the city one day so that we can grow our tax base, and that we can grow this way. I want to propose to you, here's the other way we can grow. If we choose not to do this, we continue to tell developers, we don't have any money for you, you got to pay for everything on the front end, you got to put it on the price of the lot, those lots are going to be however many hundred thousand dollars with all the amenities and everything else, you gift that to us, and then we'll use it to tax you. And we can tell developers to do that, and they will continue to do that at a price point of roughly 550, 600,000 and above. So when I'm selling a million-dollar spec house, that, that system works, I've got a pretty clock tower, I've got some amenities, I have growth and development, I have a place people want to live, and I can afford to build that level of housing. If I don't want to hit that price point, what I'm forced to do is to say, okay, we're going to divide these up, we're going to do bar ditches, we're going to do asphalt road, no curb and gutter, everything's well and septic, we're going to do one acre tracks, maybe two acre tracks, we'll be real low barriers if you want, you know, metal building, maybe that's okay, maybe we don't worry about brick, we let them put masonite on it. And so at that point, what we're doing is we're pushing our future customers outside of the city limits, and we know, because of Floyd, we know that their gallons per minute ratio out there on that southwest part of town is far less than what it needs to be for long-term sustainability, for their water, right? So we believe that one day we will be looking out for those neighbors of ours in providing water service when those wells can't keep up. And so if we want to grow and we are growing, we need density, and we just need a vehicle to get there. So, council, any further questions in kind of summarizing that? Yes, sir?
I think one thing, the questions that came up earlier, Mayor, maybe you could address this, because I know you brought it up before, which is, why just don't we handle this individually? A developer comes to us, why don't we just go out and cut a deal? Mayor, I think you had a good explanation last time, but I think it's a, it's a wise thing to do, but I'll let you answer.
Happy to offer it again, so, you know, the notion of a MUD is something I've been familiar with for four years now, and in other discussions of impact fees. This is the other way we can grow. We can charge you a fee on your lot and charge the developer that fee in order to get paid, but then we're, we're funding some of your infrastructure, so a whole nother avenue. But in this, if we do a template, right, and what we did was, we didn't vote for any particular developer, any particular MUD right away. What we did as a body is, we came together and we said, let's have a successful plan, let's put a plan in place, and let's put these guardrails up where anybody who wants to do business with the city knows what your parameters are. Here's the criteria, these are what we want, here's the needs that you get met, let's move forward together. But if you don't need those, you don't like the deal we've made, then that's fine, you can continue to develop outside of our corporate limits the same way you have before. The reason we don't want to do it one at a time is because it truly puts you in a negotiation with staff, where they've got to decide which developer they like better, which one they're working, you know, with more or less, and do we, do we charge this one, you know, this fee, and we charge that one over here, or do we allow this one in and not allow that one in? And so then you truly do have an unfair, unfree market where you have developers that can't compete now. So we have to have a level playing field, where any developer that chooses to utilize the city in this capacity can get those resources, as long as you're close enough for them. So that one-mile ETJ is good, I mean, if you were further out than that, then that being, that would bring a different set of circumstances. So I know it's good discussion. Aleah, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Let me, let me say a few things. Ms. Cassie Green?
Well, I'm in the county. Yeah, so you're in the county, and you're the county's, you know, the sheriff, and that department will continue to respond to those calls. So, you know, would we have an overlap on calls? I would hope so. You know, but then you are still paying your county taxes, and you are still being serviced by those county firefighters and the county sheriff. So let me do this. Ms. Cassie, would you mind coming up to the microphone? Yes, sir. Oh, I want to make sure we covered your questions, and then we'll try to move on. So why after the vote did we decide to talk about the MUD? Well, we've talked about it, and then we've presented it, and we don't actually have a MUD, we have a template that allows for a future MUD. So what we've done is we've drawn plans, we didn't build a house. So your, your question would say like, hey, why after you went ahead and built the home and charged me for it, then did you ask me if I wanted to build a home? Like, that's not true. Like, we haven't built the home. All we've done is drawn the plans. So we did our job as leaders of drawing the plans. You know, the future change in policy, I would clarify one thing, we don't allow for a MUD to exist. So these are private property rights. So in civics, government does not afford you your property rights. Government protects your property rights. So as the section of landowner, and you own that 600-plus acres, you get to do with it what you choose, and the state of Texas protects that. And if you choose to do a MUD, then we have a policy now that we can do business with you. But we don't, we don't let you do it, and we don't prevent you from doing it. So the state of Texas is the protector of those personal property rights. Does that make sense?
It does. And then in the 12:30 session, from what I think I understood was, they can go to the T C E Q and get that right to be a MUD with or without our consent?
Correct.
That's right, and we did have, we had a good discussion earlier, so Cassie and I are well acquainted now, it's good. But, but yes, what we talked about was, in the ETJ, a developer can simply opt out of the ETJ and then proceed directly to the T C Q or the legislature to create a MUD, but in this process, if they're choosing to engage, right, then the city and the, and the developer can basically come to those agreements that they would approve, that would make sure that, that the development occurred in the right way to city standards.
And if the T C E Q received consent from the city, would that be in their favor of getting through the application?
So it would actually be mandatory. So if the land is in a city's corporate limits or ETJ, either case, when you turn the application into the T C Q, if you do not have a city consent with it in the application, it is deemed to not be administratively complete, they won't even process it. And so, so if you are actually physically in the boundaries or in the ETJ, then that's a mandatory part of the application. If you have opted out of the ETJ, then it's not required because when you're turning your application and you're explaining, I'm in unincorporated county.
Got you. Where is the ETJ? So I researched that, it was eight miles out, and then we're saying one mile, so is there a certain distance?
One mile outside of your city corporate limits, which is not a circle. And so like, it's, it's boundaries that are drawn and have been updated and continue to change, but it's all around, yeah. And so it's one mile, it used to be five, we reduced it to one mile because the five miles didn't make a lot of sense in us trying to audit or approve planning that was four and a half miles out. When the state changed the regulatory control that we can't go out and annex that four miles out and skip over one, two, and three miles, you have to be adjacent. So because of that, the state is protecting your personal property rights to a great extent, and so it made far more sense for us to reduce our ETJ to one mile, and now it makes even better sense for us to put together a template and a program that if you're within that one mile, we have services we'd like to offer you, but we need you to build according to our standards, and then this facility, this vehicle, this MUD allows you to finance that as a developer to help levy a tax to offset some of your risk. And then everybody knows going into it. So let me ask a question. You're not against golf courses, are you?
No.
Like country clubs, people that live on them?
Right.
Okay. So nobody ever bought a house on the golf course and then walked outside yelling at the golfer that hit their home with the golf ball and said, what are you doing out here? Like, you knew when you bought that house, you got golf balls flying over your roof, and you knew you were in the middle of a golf course. The MUD is the same setup. You know when you're buying in that MUD, that you have a board that you're going to elect, that you sit outside the city limits, but you've got this new vehicle, that you are paying 150% for water and sewer. All of this documentation is in your purchase agreement, and it's before you ever build, it's right up front when you buy that lot, it's right up front when you go and look at that home. Same way is a PID, you know, if you live in a Same way is a pit, you know, if if you live in a pit area, you pay for nice trees and landscaping and all sorts of stuff outside of your neighborhood. And you have to pay that two thousand dollars a year fee and you're given that on the front end. So I see you still have a few questions.
How can you see that? But I think you guys answered all of my questions concerning, you know, in this earlier part of public hearing, however so attainable housing. And upon my research, I've found upon testimony, upon testimony, that at the front end, it's not affordable because of course, I understand how the the developer doesn't have to charge as much on the front end on the house part of it, but then you've got your fees in your, you know, and if we're selling them water, then on top of that, you know, that would come with the price. So, you know, it doesn't seem affordable.
Well, let's, let's point to that. That's not a risk that I'm willing to take and I'm definitely not willing to take that risk with your money. So we have been elected to help steward your money. If we don't have this policy in place, you're asking me to take risks with your money to speculate on future housing. And the way we do that is we provide arterial streets, we put in sewer and water main extensions and we provide services, hoping that housing will be affordable in new developments. And we don't think that that's the right way to grow. So the person who's going to take that risk of it not being affordable is going to be that developer, not the buyer. So you understand that if the developer risks all of this hundred million dollars to develop these three thousand, you know, home area, these lots, they're taking that risk. And if it's not affordable, if no one can afford it, people don't buy it and that's on them. Now, you know what I've risked of your money? Zero. And you know that when that fails, I haven't compromised my staff where they now have inherited sewer, water, streets and everything that's failing. So if we continue to tell developers, like, go outside the city limits, then they're going to build less dense. The only other option is for us as council to go and find thirty million dollars and participate in that hundred million dollar speculative development, which is the way we used to grow. We would put in the the oversized water for all future growth, we would, we would let them pay for the two-lane road, we would pay for the other three, so we have the five-lane arterial. And then what we were doing is we were taking the taxes from the other side of town and putting them in those developments for growth. So this truly does allow growth to pay for growth.
Hey, can I add to this? Cassie, I feel like you're getting hung up with affordable housing or attainable housing. That has nothing to do with the mud. These may be, to Mayor's point, this may be a development of million dollar plus homes.
Right.
That's, it's just up to the developer. I mean, if he goes out and tries to build, you know, two thousand million dollar plus homes, I mean, there's not that big of a market for that. Like, that's, that's rough.
So that's not really the objective, it's to develop.
It's, it's a possibility due to the benefits of it, that they may be able to offer a similar home that's that's comparable to one inside the city, that might be less. That's just a possible benefit. That's not the reason for them at all, but it's just a possible benefit. So we can't focus on that.
I just have heard the word a lot thrown around.
But that's what I'm saying, you can't hyper-focus on that. It may or may not be a benefit. You know, Aliyah brought up in Houston, there's some that are like twenty percent less, the exact same home is twenty percent less in the mud versus inside the city. That may or may not be the case. Like, it it might be, it's great for the developer if it is because he can sell a lot of houses, right? I mean, he can sell all those a lot quicker than maybe he could inside the home or inside the city. It might be, it might not be, they may be exactly equal. That's up to the developer on what he chooses to charge.
Right. And I think it's, it's really a comparison, right? So if the developer, let's say the developer, they're going to build sixty-foot lots and they're going to build five hundred thousand dollar homes, right? Because that's what they think will sell. The the question would be, but for the mud, how much would that same product cost, right? Would it cost six hundred thousand? Would it cost six fifty? And a lot of times developers, the successful ones are really good business people, right? So they're looking at what what is the market going to to want? What are people going to buy? And a lot of times these days, they're, they're building within a community a little bit of a mix, right? They'll have some higher-end, larger lots, then they'll have some medium and then they'll have some small ones with smaller footprints responding to what the market is is purchasing. But I think that when we were talking earlier, I really resist that that term affordable housing because it is, it is used typically to mean something totally different, right? You know, certain level of, you know, you know, AMHI, you know, earnings and Section Eight housing, et cetera, that's really not what we're talking about. We're talking about whatever the product is, delivering it to the purchaser at a, at a, at a cost that would be less than it otherwise would be at a, at a level of quality of infrastructure that would be higher, plus a standing permanent vehicle that can continue to maintain and take care and rehabilitate that infrastructure.
Right. So thank you for that. Ms. Cassie, thanks for participating.
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Bonnie Seacrest, do you still have a question? Or did we answer it?
I was just going to see if, um, you, since they're outside the city limits, they're not going to be taxed by the city.
It's correct. Yeah, so let me say that so we're getting that on the microphone. Question is, since these are outside the city limits, they're not getting double taxed, right? You're not, you're not paying your city tax and paying a mud tax, you're not. So just like being inside the city limits, I pay my school district tax separate from I pay my city tax. Well, when I'm outside in the mud, I now have a mud tax, not a city tax, but I still got to pay for the schools and I still got to pay for everything else if you're in that district. Thank you guys for indulging us. I want to say one last thing, okay? This has taken a good hour, maybe? I don't know how long we've been going. We had a town hall, that's Councilman Tips that requested that, I believe, right? Okay. We really are wanting to push this out and like this is transparent, that's what we want, we're wanting to engage. However, in candor, right, with the most candid way I can say this, if there's a big bad wolf in the room somewhere and and that's where all this is coming from, like, you got to tell us about it, right? So if, Cassie, if you have a problem with plans or with policies or with LLCs or corporations or documents, I totally get all that. If you have an issue with this mud policy is the way that big government is going to come in and take over our city, right, then then like this isn't the forum for that, you know? So moving forward, I just want to be upfront and I think it's good for all of us to be upfront. We have things that we want to talk about and address like that, let's, let's schedule that outside of of our typical business meeting. What I'm going to try to do is I'm going to try to run for two years with business meetings being business meetings and global agendas and chemtrails and, you know, COVID vaccines and all of those other things, only creeping in these walls when when it actually is something that we are in control over or dealing with. And so like there, there is a a role for local government and and it is not necessarily in the global, you know, contention against the World Economic Forum, right? Now, I want to acknowledge everything else that's going on in the world and tell you, like, some of it has great validity. But I think when we take the outside forces of, well, they're trying to surveil the state and they're trying to put us in, you know, prison camps and all these other things, right? Those concerns don't necessarily connect to staff in their ability to draw a template for us to engage in a business deal with a developer. So I'm saying that very candidly, right? This works both ways. I don't mind you coming up and giving me public comment and putting me on the burner. You got to stand up and tell us the same reason you're here, same way the other gentleman may have had an issue with police. So let's move forward in this. I will entertain any subject that has local government control within these these chambers. So thank you, guys. Thank you, Ms. Aliyah. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, a pleasure to be here.
Yes. Let's take a fifteen-minute recess. We're going to come back for a few more discussions and then we'll have a few votes. Thank you all.
Okay, we've got council seated and a few other staffers heading back where they need to. So we've successfully completed nine B. We're going to move ourselves into nine C, which is a discussion on our street patching contract. Mr. Harder.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Alan Harder, Public Works Director, here to have a discussion on about the proposed 2025 street patching contract. This is a continuation of an update that I provided on April eighth regarding the ongoing street patching contracts that we had. If you recall, those were two contracts for two and a half million dollars apiece for a total of five million dollars. One of those was effectively complete at that time. The other project's about fifty percent complete and is still ongoing. So during that meeting, one of the things that was requested was a look at a new patching contract to really focus on just larger patching areas where we see more efficient use of dollars, better per price, or sorry, better per square yard or per ton of material pricing. And a number that was discussed there was potentially two million dollars from the working budget. So immediately, the day after that meeting, I went and met with our purchasing agent, an assistant purchasing agent, and discussed options for contracting two million dollars. We felt like, and what I'm recommending, is an RFP, a request for proposal, for a new project, the 2025 street patching contract for two million dollars. The scope would be, as discussed, large asphalt patching only. We would be able to incorporate lessons learned from our previous, really our current contract, ways that we can like pull out traffic control and make it a separate item to get better overall pricing. Estimated with that the dollar value that we saw per quantity in our current contract, we'd be able to do about 1.6 lane miles of major patching with two million dollars. If you were to look at that as far as, you know, a lane wide, if you considered that, say, a hundred foot patch, that's eighty-five patches. So at first, 1.6 lane miles, to me, didn't seem like much, but when I kind of thought of, well, what do we kind of consider a major patch, a big area, eighty-five of those is a significant amount. So, and actually believe that putting this back out again and really focusing on larger areas, we could probably get better pricing as well. And so 1.6 is conservatively low. I think it's likely we'd be able to do a little bit more than that with a new contract. So if we got direction to move forward today, we could advertise that request for proposal through May and early June of this year, do the evaluation and awards on, award of any bids submitted July, and then have a notice to proceed and the contractor working either late July or early August of this year's kind of the timeframe. So just wanted to give you a look at, you know, what we went back and discussed, what we believe is possible if we receive two million dollars for a new patching contract. So at this point, I'll open it up for questions, but also if there's any direction that y'all would like to provide, we're ready to entertain that.
Let me, let me give a comment, make sure we're, we're saying this out loud. So this in and of itself is not a good plan. If this was our plan, and we were putting this out there, we wouldn't be doing the, the city a service, and we wouldn't be doing a good job. The plan that's in place that you and Mr. Hooper have is a very good plan. Am I saying eleven, twelve million dollars annualized, large street repair replacement, mill overlay, Cape seal?
Correct.
Yes. So that is built into the budget. This council sees the need for that. So we have twelve million dollars in addition to the original plan, which is eight million or six million in the, in the current budget without that. Street maintenance, repair, street.
I'd have to go look and see what that number is.
Yeah, I think it was closer to twelve million. I believe it was approximately 11.8 million.
Eleven point eight six five.
Okay.
Is that right?
There we go. Okay, so this is just a supplement. This is not, this is not like nourishment. We're not telling you this is dinner, right? We're just telling you this, this is a, let's get some of these patches so that we can mitigate some of the alligator and, and the washout that's happening all over town. And then on top of that, we have DuraPatters. And those things will be hitting the streets hopefully this month.
They are. They have hit the alleys last week. We have them in the alleys. I'm going to inspect that. I have a meeting with our street superintendent later this week to inspect the work that they've done. If we feel like that quality is sufficient to put them on the streets, already have places identified for them. I'm, I'm very, giddy is the word that kind of comes to mind about that. I am excited.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to that. And then we, we see this as a temporary move. We hope that this isn't something that, that council's trying to repeat with you guys. We think that it's a little bit of a catch-up because we've had, you know, a lapse here. And, and we've also taken on a, a lot of snow. We've taken on a lot of water in a very wet season. And so washout is what's contributing to a lot of these, these, I'd say, wear and tear areas.
Yes, sir. Cold weather, frequent temperature changes, and moisture are the enemy of asphalt pavement. And we have seen a lot of those things this year.
Welcome to Amarillo, right? Like, it's not odd to be forty degrees in the morning and eighty-five in the afternoon. Very, very difficult on tho- those surfaces. So I just wanted to take a minute to make sure that the public can hear, this is not our plan. This is a part of the plan, and it's a good way for us to spend two million dollars that we've identified in the given budget that we don't have anywhere else on our priority list that we need to go put that currently. And so we want to continue to push money into those road repairs. This is one more way to do it. And if council's in favor of it, I would love to direct staff to put this RFP out and try to award it here in July. Anything from council want to redirect? Okay. Staff, if you guys would proceed with that, we would love that. Bring it back to us as soon as you can. Get us another good contractor. And then if you see a way to maximize those monies based on how you're letting those jobs out in design, feel free. Like, we, we understand, you know, better than we know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harder. Okay, don't leave. Item nine D, Mr. Harder again, Playa Lake Level Monitoring.
I'm prepared. So still Alan Harder, still your Public Works Director, here to talk about Playa Lake Level Monitoring. This is an update on a project that we started working on last summer. Before I get started, because I'm really bad about forgetting things, I want to say before I do, I want to acknowledge two gentlemen in the audience, Fad Diaz and Taylor Perry. They're our Drainage Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. They were key in making this project happen. And I just want to acknowledge them and their being here. They're a huge role in this. They don't get the recognition that they deserve. So them and their team. So, give you an overview of where I'm going to go with this. Going to talk about our Playa Lakes, how they're maintained, the ones that are maintained and pumped by the city. I have some maps that I'll show later. Give us all a good understanding of the entire city before we get into the lake level monitoring. Purpose of this presentation is to present this new Playa Lake Level Monitoring System. Then I'm going to give you a summary of the actual project to install the lake level monitoring infrastructure. And then I'm actually going to walk you through a website that we have developed. It's going to launch after this presentation. I put tomorrow's date on there to be conservative, but we're actually going to launch it after this presentation. Will be available to the public, the things that I'm, I'm showing you here. So very excited about that. So a summary of our Playa Lakes, and like I said, there will be a map on the next slide. We have five lakes with permanent pump stations. Those are listed out. McDonald, Bennett, Lawrence, which has two pump stations, T-Anchor, and Martin Road. There's one lake with a portable pump, that's Playa Seven, and plans for a permanent pump station that I've presented in the past year. And then two lakes that are owned by the city and maintained by the city with no pumps, Willow Grove Lake and McCarty Lake. And I know you may ask, well, then how does the water leave those? Those basins drain, don't drain naturally, but water infiltrates into the ground or just through evaporation is, is how water leaves those basins. Here's a map of the southwest quadrant of the city. So starting in the bottom left, and I understand that's a little bit hard to see, but is Playa Seven, where we have a portable pump. They'll circle with what looks like a B in it as a symbol for a pump. The red line represents the force main. That's the pressure pipe that water goes up to the green line, which is gravity system. So Playa Seven is pumped up through the greenways to Hillside Road where it then gravity drains to McDonnell Lake. At McDonnell Lake, which is at the intersection of Forty-Fifth and Colter, you can see that we have a pump there which pumps water west down Forty-Fifth to Saucy, north on Saucy a little ways where it enters a gravity storm system that goes up through Metta Park and ultimately leaves the city through West Amarillo Creek. You can also see, talking just about pumped lakes right now, Bennett Lake, which is located at I-27 in Georgia, that is pumped north towards Lawrence Lake. And then Lawrence Lake, which I mentioned, has two pump stations, one on the west side, conveniently call that the west pump station, pumps west towards the intersection of Bell and I-40, where it then enters a gravity system and goes out through Metta Park and West Amarillo Creek. And then another pump, which I'll show you the rest of its line on the next slide that goes north towards East Amarillo Creek. On the bottom right side of the page, you can see our two lakes that are maintained without pumps, McCarty Lake, which is south of Fifty-Eighth in between Western and Georgia, and Willow Grove Lake, which is on South Washington Street, a little bit north of Fifty-Eighth. This is kind of the center of Amarillo. You can see there in the bottom left, Lawrence Lake. I mentioned that there's a pump station on the east side which pumps north up to Tenth Avenue. It then gravity drains out towards Thompson Park, which ultimately leaves the city through East Amarillo Creek to the Canadian River. You can see T-Anchor Lake, just north of I-40 and T-Anchor Boulevard, which pumps towards downtown, and then gravity drains up to Thompson Park, and Martin Lake, which pumps west towards the Dumas Highway or 287, which gravity drains also to Thompson Park. So that is a good overview of, of the Playa Lake system that we maintain, and how our pumps get water out of those Playas and out of the city towards the Canadian River Basin with the, the two pumps, one permanent and one temporary, which go to another lake and is then pumped out. So I want to talk about a few terms, and kind of give you a historical idea of how we have measured lake level, which is based on percent full. So historically, this was done with a visual observation only on the lakes that we pump, using reference points along the bank. This is convenient at a place like Lawrence Lake where it's a fairly steep slope. We can see steps that come from the inflows and things like that. It's, it's relatively easy to gauge the percent full of that lake. However, doing it visually is not very scientific, but it gives us a good idea of how full the lakes were. However, it does require staff to actually go out after any significant rain event or weekly to check those levels. Takes a, a good amount of time. A term that, terms that we use, zero percent full, I didn't list it, but it's, it's fairly obvious. It's when there's no water in the lake. Our pumps generally are not able to lower lakes that low because they have intake pipes that have to stick up out of the mud a little bit. But that's what zero percent is. A hundred percent full, it's different at every lake. It's a point at which any additional runoff would impact other public facilities. A great example of that is McDonnell Lake, the one at Forty-Fifth and Colter. That flood plain on a map extends all the way out to Colter Street. It goes all the way north to Forty-Fifth. The restrooms at the park are underwater. The parking lot is underwater. We don't feel like that's appropriate to call one hundred percent. For us, once water touches the sidewalk that goes around that park, that starts to impact the public. It impacts other public facilities. So at that lake, that's what we call a hundred percent. And that's just one example. Percent full data was something that was only tracked internally, but in 2023, we were able to start adding that to the city website for community awareness. That data was updated weekly, every Monday morning at nine AM or after a significant rain event when there was a large change that we wanted to share with the public. So our Playa Lake Level Monitoring Project, the scope was a publicly available Playa Lake Level Dashboard with real-time information. We wanted accurate information that could be shared with the public. So we issued a request for qualifications for this project in June of last year. West Consultants was selected for the project, and they have done an outstanding job for us. Very happy with the work that they've done and, and the teammate that they've truly been. And you'll see that as I go on through the project. They recommended us, and we agreed, that we break this project into two phases. The first kind of being evaluation of the Playa Lakes and city needs. They needed to come to town and, and see what we were working with. They conducted a summary workshop with us where they got input from our staff, got input from us of, you know, how do we qualify these lakes? What does one hundred percent full mean to the city of Amarillo versus a bunch of hydrologists from somewhere else in the state? And then they submitted a recommendation to us for equipment and software. Now, one of the things we knew we were going to need was depth sensors. How can you tell how full a lake is if you don't know how much water's in it? But some things that they actually recommended were the installation of rain gauges. So that's something that is very beneficial to you to understand how much rain you're getting at each lake and what that does to the lake level. It's also good information for the public. And then cameras, which would actually allow us to monitor the lake in real time. And I'll get into that in a little bit, but we agreed with that. I want to talk a little bit about here, when we talk about the depth sensors, we're still going to be reporting lake level as percent full, but now it's actually based on the volume of water at different depths of the lake. So our consultant was able to use LiDAR data, which basically builds a surface model, and determine when that lake has one foot of water in it, that's this volume. Well, if you think about a birdbath or you think about any kind of large, something that goes up, as you start filling it up, it fills up pretty quick, pretty fast with a small amount of water. As you go up, though, that footprint expands. And so every foot of depth you go, you actually gain more and more capacity as you go up. And so instead of just measuring percent full based on depth, we're actually measuring it by volume, which is much more accurate. Anyway, then phase two of the project was procurement and installation of hardware, software development and implementation. That hardware, I'm going to refer to it as monitoring stations. The software development is effectively the website. One thing I wanted to talk about, the installation of the hardware, we were able to save costs on that installation and actually gained some knowledge by having city staff work hand in hand with this consultant installing all these monitoring stations. And so in addition to saving us cost on the installation, now we have staff who understands how this works better. They've installed the hardware. They've worked on it. So if we have damage to it, we have staff that can work on that without having to rely on somebody else from out of town to come in to work on it. So here's a picture of some of the installation. We're drilling a hole for the monitoring station to go in at Playa Seven. Here we are running out the protective cable that goes down to the lake into the water, which actually holds the pressure sensor that measures the depth. You can see a pole there on the right side of the page that's mounted to hold the monitoring station. Here's a crew installing stakes to hold down that protective cable at another lake. And those are actually, you know, city employees there doing this work. And I don't know how, but I didn't get Fad or Taylor in any of these pictures. So they're sneaky like that. I'll have to go back out and get more of them. Here's one at McDonnell Lake where we actually trenched it in, you know, that being a, a area that's accessed by the public and gets mowed. We wanted to protect that cable going down into the water. And then here's what the monitoring station, once it's installed, looks like. So you can see the rain gauge. That's the kind of silver bucket on top, the solar panel that provides power. There's a camera up there as well pointed towards the lake. And then the control box where the, all the level information and data comes in that goes to our third-party website where it's all hosted. So now I'm going to give you an overview of the website. Bear with me. These are screenshots that I took of the webpage. And so quality-wise, I encourage everybody to go when this is launched, and there will be a press release with the link as well. The link's also going to be available on the Drainage Utility website, the same place we used to go to see the percent full dashboard. That's where the link's going to be. And so in there, you know, it will be a much clearer view. You can scroll around in it. This website's also, you can open it up on your phone. It's not quite as user-friendly on a phone as it is on a browser. That's natural, but it does still work pretty effectively. So the homepage has a map that shows all the lake locations with their real-time percent full. So that's the very first thing you see. Any lake, if you know where you live, you can see what the percent full is. It also has links at the top to a number of dashboards, which I'll, I'll get into where all the data is presented. So the main link is at the top of that. You click on, takes you to the lake summary dashboard. That provides, this is just one example, Bennett Lake, but it's actually, all the lakes are on one page where you can see on the left side what the current percent full is. In the middle, you can see a graph that shows you the historic percent full going back by default seven days. And then on the right side, you can see the most recent picture, which is updated every hour that was taken at that lake. Since that picture was taken at Bennett, we actually got permission from the property owner to go in and remove some trees. We have a much better view of the lake there. And I actually went, went to look at that picture yesterday. I saw our city crews out there doing that work. So that was pretty cool to be able to see. If you click on either the percent full or that graph, it opens up the percent full graph. It gives you a better view. By default, that is a seven-day range. However, you can see in the top-left corner, you can set that date range to anything you want. So if you want to go back a few months, or any time where data was recorded, you can see what that percent full was. So pretty good information there. If you had clicked on the picture, it would bring up the webcam dashboard where you can scroll through the most recent pictures of any Playa Lakes. That's a picture of Lawrence Lake right there, taken from the North Shore, looking down to the southwest. Other dash, dashboards there are available is the webcam dashboard. This shows you all webcams with the most up-to-date picture, but it also lets you scroll through all the pictures for the lakes. So you can actually click back in time. And so two weeks ago, or about a week ago, when we received significant rain overnight, I was able to log in and actually scroll through. actually scroll through and see what the lake levels did overnight. We'll have access to historic pictures. It takes up a large amount of data, so it's not hosting on here. But we have access to historic pictures, that we can actually create time-lapse videos of our lake levels changing, either as rainfall fills it up, or as our pumps bring it down. The last dashboard that we have is the rain increment dashboard. So, at any lake, this actually shows you by default a seven-day period, how much, I apologize, over a thirty-day period, how much rainfall was received by day. So, there you can see fairly well two significant rain events that we had over the past few weeks. That can also, just like the level data, that can be adjusted to see any timeframe where data was collected. So, we could go back in time, we can look at the most recent. You can also see a summary at the bottom of that page, that shows you how much rain have we received in the past fifteen minutes, all the way up to how much rainfall's been received in the last thirty days. And then the last thing that you could do on that increments graph, by default, you're looking at daily totals. You can actually break that out and look at hourly totals, or all the way down to fifteen-minute totals. So, you can see how much rainfall was received in every fifteen-minute increment. By default, at the top of the page, that's those numbers where it says like point-six inches. Those are reporting fifteen-minute increments. And so, you can see, I believe this was at Bennett Lake, the most amount of rain we received in a fifteen-minute period was over a half-inch at Bennett Lake. So, a lot of really good information there, that I think is informative to the public, but for our staff, what it helps us do is correlate, what does a two-inch rain do to Bennett Lake? What does a one-inch rain do to Lawrence Lake? And be able to better predict how much capacity we have for different storms. So, that's very exciting. Whereas now, we kind of have an understanding of, you know, about how much a lake will come out on different storms, is a much more scientific approach. So, we'll have a better idea of how much capacity we truly have in our lakes. That's a good presentation, or a presentation to the website, but really, the best way's going to be, when this goes live, get in there and play with it. Try to break it. Try to see what you can do. And our Drainage Utility team will be ready for phone calls for questions about things. We're very excited about this and looking forward to launch it. So, ask if you have
I would say, great job. I'd say this is a great example of public works and the departments taking, okay, we have different direction. You guys are funding this, and we know what you need. We're going to go bring every tool we can. We heard dashboard, so we did it. We did cameras, we did all sorts of stuff. The public interfacing, forward-facing part of this is fantastic. So, I mean, I think this is a great example of what we, we want to see, you know, in, in things we've all lived through, or this council lived through, less Tim, but I mean, he lived through it as well. He just didn't have to take a few phone calls on that flood. But everything that you've done on this is a hundred percent in line with what we'd, we'd like. I would say, continue. And then, the public really wants to hear these improvement projects. So, maybe this dashboard, you know, leads you to that link where you can see, well, here's the force main schedule that just got led, or whatever, and, you know, force mains expected to go from Playa 7 up to Forty-Fifth in the next six months, or whatever.
And we can, in that website, embed bookmarks. Some of the default ones are like weather forecasts and things like that. It is possible to embed bookmarks.
No, great job, really.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. That's Drainage, no, that's Playa Lake Level Monitoring. We're going to move to 9E, Mr. Hooper, Drainage Bond Project.
Yeah, so this will segue, good afternoon, Council, and welcome, Councilman Reed. This will segue right from where Alan left off. I will, first thing I'll say is, dashboards kind of related to this, and also with that project, with street projects, we're already working on those. We have some examples. In fact, I showed Mr. Path one last week, that I think we're going to, you're going to see that come up in the future, especially with projects like this, or capital projects, as we move forward through those. This actual presentation here was one that was requested by Councilman Sherlin. This request was for an update on where we are with all the bond projects related to drainage. Glad to give this update. I will tell you that over the past year, we have been extremely busy in the planning stages of all this. And there's a lot of research that has to go into this. There's a lot of things that we have to look at to make sure that what we're doing moving forward is going to be exactly what we said it was going to be. And if not, we would pull those projects and we would replace them with something else. So, I will give you a little bit of history, but before I do that, the purpose of this presentation is to give you the history on the project, selections, evaluations that we've gone through. We'll discuss our project list, which will be an updated list from what you heard during the budget presentations in 2023. We'll also discuss our costing methodology, and the reason that I want to do that is I think it's very educational for you to hear that today, leading up to a presentation we're going to have on the 27th, on our wastewater treatment facilities, and how we go about this process for estimating costs. We'll also discuss our cost projections, status of each of those projects, and next steps for completion. I'm going to intentionally today, too, if it's okay with you, Mayor, move a little bit slower through this presentation. I think it would be great to go through some more in-depth history, so that our new Councilman can get somewhat caught up and up to speed where we were at with all these projects, and also to understand our process of how we select budget and construct and complete these projects that we're going to be discussing today. So, with that said, back in 2023, there was some budget discussions that took place. Council actually approved a rate increase to the drainage fee that year to generate about forty-two-point-eight million dollars in bond proceeds. We also identified three-point-two million dollars in cash CIP that we had at that time, that we would put toward the engineering and design of some of these projects as well. And then debt was issued in March 26 of 2024. So, we're right at about a year out from when the debt was issued on that. We issued about thirty-nine million of that forty-two-point-eight, so that approximately leaves us about three-point-eight left that we could still issue for that. We, we took the, the money that we had in cash, and we started procuring our engineers right away to begin the process of preliminary engineering reports. The PERs is what we call them. It's an investigative process, where we analyze the project itself to make sure that it meets some goals. We had one specific goal in particular, is that all the projects that we're doing, we need to make sure that they mitigate flooding. If they don't mitigate flooding in a way that would make an impact, we were going to reevaluate and figure out where we need to go with that. Also, our final project selection will be based on that mitigation impact to the funding. We also would need to look at, talk with our consultants about the feasibility of even those projects even working, and again, as I mentioned, the budget impact for that. So, I think right here, I'm going to slow down a little bit. I think it'd be important and helpful for our new council member, and maybe even for you as well, because I don't think we've done this since I've been here, where we actually talk about our costing methodology and how we go about these projects. And I want to bring up a couple of examples to you that I think would be important as well. What we're used to doing in our, in our home life, if we need a new roof on our house, we contact three or four, five, six, however many you want to contact roofing contractors, and they bring us what's called an estimate. We look at those estimates. We usually are going to choose the one that costs the least, and then we're going to know that on that estimate, that is the cost. That's what you're going to be paying to have your roof done, unless they tear that roof apart, and they find that your decking has a big giant hole in it, or something that really is unforeseen. But generally, what you get on that estimate is what you're going to pay. If you have someone to come paint your fence, they're going to give you an estimate. Basically, that estimate is what you expect to pay for that. I just recently did that on some, some yard work. They gave me an estimate, and that's what I expected to pay, and when he got finished with it, that's exactly what I did pay. I'm going to bring one other example up, too, to kind of lead you through to where I'm going with this chart that I have up there. I wrecked my car on the way home from work, and I look at that car. And by the way, my dad was in the body business for thirty-three years. That's what he did for a living. So, I know that pretty well, right? I wrecked my car, the front end's crushed in, the bumper's crushed, the headlights broken out, there's, there's nothing left of the bumper and the grill, the, the doors caved in, and the window's broken, and the mirror's missing. And the first thing that's going to happen when I get home is my wife is going to say, well, first she's going to probably hit me or something about wrecking the car. Wasn't my fault, though. I was, it wasn't my fault. So, she's okay with that, but she's going to say, how much is that going to cost? Being the person that I am, that knows a little bit about the body industry, and a little bit about what's going on, I'm going to have looked at that from the outside and said, I think that's going to be around three thousand, maybe four thousand dollars at most. Well, and Don's getting a kick out of this, because he knows that I can't do that legitimately and give her a cost on that. Now, if she would have given me a little bit of extra time, maybe three weeks, where I could go in and I could start calling some people and finding out how much a tie rod costs, and how much a new door is, and all these different things, I could probably come up with a better estimate. But she wanted it right then. I said thirty-five-hundred to four thousand dollars. I don't know of a body shop anywhere in the world that I could call up on the phone and say, hey, the headlights broken, the bumper's gone, the grill's crushed in, the door's got a big dent in it, the mirror's broken, how much is that going to cost me? The first thing they're going to say is, you need to bring that in, we need to dig into that, and we need to look at it before we give you a cost. They're not going to be like the roofing contractor, or someone else, or even building a home. A square footage price for a spec home is a little bit different than a custom home, and generally, you can get a pretty good idea of what that is on a spec home versus a very custom home, some, got a bunch of different angles in it, and multiple windows, and three stories. It's going to be priced different than another one. So, I take the car to the body shop, and they call me three days later, after they've done an investigative report on that. And they tell me, this car is probably totaled, it's going to be twenty-four thousand dollars for this car. And I say, wait a minute, what do you mean? And they say, well, the frame is actually bent. I couldn't see that from the outside. I couldn't see everything that was going on in there to come up with that determination. But they gave me a price, so now I have to tell my wife, what was four thousand dollars is now twenty-four thousand dollars. And that's because I gave her a price a little bit too soon on that, although she asked for it, so I needed to give her a number. So, as we go through this, I'm going to compare that to what we do when we go through our, our pricing here at the city. When, when we went through your council meeting in 2023, we were asked to identify some projects. So, that's the first thing. Now, those things can be identified by a master plan, maybe a specific need, a special project, a public concern, or it could just be a council initiative that you give us. That's how we identify a project. The second thing we do is the estimate, where we give you a ballpark conceptual estimate based on the known data that we have and information about the project. That's looking at the car from the outside and thinking, we know what that costs. In the particular case of these drainage projects, we looked at certain things like, well, we know what a pump costs. Well, we generally know what piping is per foot. We have a pretty good idea of how we can come back and give you some pricing for that. I wasn't here at the time when they did that, but I did go back and watch all the presentations, and I did talk to staff that was here when the estimates were given for the projects that we had. They had about approximately a week to come up with all of these forty-million dollars worth of projects, knowing that probably you were going to see some different numbers when we got our PER done. The PER is the, is getting in there with the body man and actually getting under the car and doing the investigation, right? Preliminary engineering report is exactly what I've got on the screen there. It's an investigative summary of the project's feasibility, and also a better-defined cost estimate with alternative methods. And as we go through this arrow from left to right, we're honing those prices in as we go. And this is how we do all of our major capital projects. I think sometimes we get hung up on the list and the estimate that was given, before we actually do the homework to know what we can and do and what's feasible, and what, what even will work and mitigate flooding. So, we went through that process. This is pretty much where we're at with the entire project list, and the reason that this was delayed in coming after the request that Mr. Sherlin made for us to bring this back is, we were almost finished with all of our PERs, and we wanted to make sure that we had all of those in, so we could have some better pricing. We, we had the investigations done, we could come back and give you some factual data. So, we're at that point right now. The OPCC is actually an opinion of probable construction cost. Now, what that is, is a complex design process that the engineers go through. After we hire an engineer to do this piece of it, now they start developing the plans based on the scope that we gave them for this particular job, and then they can give us an opinion of probable costs that even hones that pricing in a little bit closer to where we're at. Then the final piece is the bid. Now, this is the actual cost, and believe it or not, this is the very first time, and the only time, that you know what the actual cost is of a project. Now, do we try to get as close as we can with all of those estimates and ballparks? We, we really do. It's just tough to do on complex projects. You're better with the PER, you're a little bit better with the OPCC, and then you get the bid, and we kind of know where we're at, and what we have to take, and what we have to eliminate from this list. And I tell you that all upfront, a good, a good example is the lake level monitoring that Alan just gave. When we were asked to investigate that, and we start through that process, I remember it was, I had a discussion with Andrew, and we were talking through how we would, how we would get this project going. What do we think that's going to cost? We have no clue. We had no clue. We'd never done anything like that before. So, we had to go get our opinions. We had to get everything done before we knew what we were going to be putting in, and we're adding things, like the video, or the, the photos, and all those different things. So, with that said, I want to show you, this is the original list that we had proposed in 2023. There were eleven projects identified for potential flood mitigation projects, and this list is not tied to the bond, by the way. I mean, I think we get a little bit hung up on that sometimes, that we have a list, and why didn't we do the exact list that we said we were going to do, and it's not tied to the bond at all. The bond is for drainage projects. These are all drainage projects. So, of course, we wanted to start our PER investigation, all of this, on all of these projects, to see, remember those things, whether it's feasible or not, whether it mitigates flooding, and whether it fits our budgetary needs. So, as we went through that, we had many, many discussions, many, many planning meetings. We started getting those reports back, and we started talking through all of the items to make sure that we had confidence in what we can and can't do related to these, these projects. So, now, here's the shocker I'm going to show you, and I want to walk you through this. This is where we have gone through and eliminated some of these projects, and I want to walk through each of the ones that we've, we've crossed out to show you, and talk a little bit about why we eliminated, eliminated those off of our list, before we start getting engineers procured to start the actual design, to get the OPCC on these projects. I'll start with Coulter and Hillside Inlets. That was a project that we'd identified in an area that floods at that intersection, pretty regularly, especially if we get an inch or plus more rain there. What we found out when we did the modeling on that intersection, that the increasing the inlet size would not drain the intersection much faster than it's draining now. That flows downhill to McDonnell Lake. It's all gravity flow that goes down there, but the inlet size just wouldn't give us enough that would mitigate the flooding there. What we also learned there is that intersection drains itself out relatively quick, once the rain stops. So, we felt like that that was something that wasn't, the only way that we could really make that mitigate flooding is if we increased the size of all the infrastructure from there all the way down to McDonnell Lake. So, we knew that that was probably going to be out of the question as far as money was concerned, and it wouldn't have the impact that we thought that it would have. So, that's why that one's crossed off. Move down to Fulton and Bell, the fifteen-inch storm sewer. We felt like we had a choke in the system there, where it was keeping that, retaining that water, causing some flooding issues. So, we thought we could take that choke point and make that a little bit bigger, and then that would allow us to mitigate the flooding there as well. What we found out, when we started doing all of the hydrology models and everything that comes back in that PER, is that it would not change anything, very minimal, as far as the flooding in that area. What, the only way that we could do that one is if we replace storm sewers all the way to Lawrence Lake. That's a long haul from Fulton and Bell. So, we knew that that one was off the table for this round. Now, I will say that, and we mentioned this, too, Coulter and Hillside, this one, all of these projects are in our master plan. They're already identified. So, we'll continue to seek future funding sources to get some of these projects done as we go. The next one would be the dredging of the lakes, McDonald, Metta Park, Thompson, and Lawrence. After they went out and did surveys, and what they did is they used sonar on all these lakes, we knew that at McDonnell Lake, we had, when we were putting in our new inlets at McDonnell Lake a few years ago, oh, I'm sorry, our, yeah, our new inlet pipe that goes to the pumping system there, that we ran into about four feet of silt around where that pump was. So, we just assumed that it was like that consistently across that entire body of water. Once they ran their sonar across there, we realized that it wasn't. The only place where there was silt, makes sense now if you think about it, is where the pump is, because we backflow that one as well. We backflush it sometimes in the lake. So, all the silt stays right there at the deepest part where that's at. The rest of the lake didn't have enough silt in it to make any impact to the drainage story. So, we said, okay, well, let's do the others. Same story for Lawrence Lake as well. Metta Park and Thompson are both pass-through lakes, and what that means is, they're just really, the water goes there, goes over the weir, and goes into the creek when it rains. You wouldn't see any impact, well, I say that, you would see a minimal impact to the flooding if you did anything as far as dredging is concerned there. What they did tell us is that dredging would be important for recreational purposes for Metta Park and things like that. And unfortunately, we can't pay for those things out of Drainage Utility, being the enterprise fund. So, we were able to take those off of our list with confidence that they were not going to help us as far as drainage, as far as flood mitigation is concerned. Drainage Channel on Fifty-Eighth and McCarty's, the same thing. Once we did the hydrology report on that, and it came back, a lot of data came back on that one, that we were going to very, have a very minimal impact there with that one as well. Thirty-Fourth and Grand Channel, it was not related to what we're trying to work on here as far as flood mitigation. So, even though that's scratched off the list here, as all of these are, there's still projects that are on our radar, just not for this bond that's being, this bond money that's being spent right now. I think that I'm really proud of the time that we spent on this, because we want to make sure that if you're going to give us money, you're going to give us that kind of money to spend toward this, that we give you a product back that makes a difference. I would hate to go in and do projects that, that didn't mitigate flooding like we thought they would, and then everybody wonder why we did those. So, I think the process that we went through was great. It also gave us a, it gave some of us that have been around for a while, a good education on what education on what we thought would make a difference, won't. And that's okay. I'm good with that because at least we have good data to go by now. With that said, let me walk you through the projects that are on the list and talk about the numbers that have changed on those. Uh, the first one will be Lawrence Lake. And the reason I have it first is we feel like Lawrence Lake is a project that probably has the most impact as far as flood mitigation is concerned. Uh, everybody remembers the floods of '23 and how all the things that we had to do there and temporary pumping and, and everything else. When we, when we first, uh, sent this project, uh, through the, the process, there was a lot of things involved with it. There was slide slope repair, regabian basket repairs, there were, uh, uh, talk about excavation of a certain area so we could put a new pump station in, all these different things that we were taking into account. What we realized in the end is on this Lawrence Lake project, the only thing that would make the, well, the thing that would make the biggest difference here would be to add a new force main. And what that means is you see that yellow line that's the longest line moving, uh, from the lake all the way to the west, all the way to Bell Street. That would be an increased line that would be 36 inches as opposed to the 15-inch line that we have right now. And what that means is when we put a new pump station in, as you see up there at the north part of the lake, that's where we had the text temporary pumps. That area did not flood up there. That was one of the areas that didn't flood, so it's easy access. We can get a pump station there. So what we're proposing now on this project is we shifted gears. We take out all of those other things that are in this project and do what's important to drain that lake at a higher rate than we could drain it before. So this next slide kind of shows you that. This would be a 15 million gallon pump station would have the ability to draw down the lake about twice the speed that we can draw it down now. So what used to take us a month would take us a half a month. Now, you've got to remember in '23, the month of May had seven and a half inches of rain in it. So if you think about incrementally before we got to the flood areas at the last part of the month, if we could have been pumping at twice the rate during that time, we would have seen a big difference in the amount of water that we still had capacity to hold and to pump out as we were getting into the flooding areas as well. The excavation piece, uh, opposite of that, the piece that we were talking about excavating, when we looked at the '23 data, put us simulate the, the, the water that was out in the flood boundary that we knew that was there. If we excavated that part of the lake, it would have lowered like Olson Street, for example, by quarter of an inch. That's not as impactful to me as if we're putting in a new pump station and a new force main that can take water out of there. And I think the entire team agreed with that 100% and the reason we went this direction. So our proposal will be to do that. 100% of the pumping would go, would be routed to the west, which takes that to Meta Park and then to West Amarillo Creek. These pump, it's the two pumps that are existing, we would use the west pump and would continue to do that. And by the way, that pump station would have two pumps in it with a third redundant pump, the new pump station. So in other words, if we had one pump that goes down in that new pump station, the third one would be activated in the place of it, and we would still have two pumps running, plus the existing west pump as well. The east pump, which goes to the east Amarillo Creek, is the hardest for us to get to. It's the one that seems to have the most debris problems in it. It would be used as a redundant pump only once this plan goes into place. So that pump itself would only be turned on in emergency situations where we knew that we needed to evacuate. And that gives us more, that gives us 3,000 gallons a minute more above and beyond what we would be able to do with the new, uh, pump stations. So that's the plan for Lawrence Lake. Now, here's the big numbers. This is again, is a design for, uh, this design would be for the new force main, improve pumping capacity, which makes a huge impact. We've already, uh, paid for the PER. That's finished now. The next, uh, piece would be to do a design, uh, contract for the construction phase. After the PER, they're estimating that's about a $24 million project. But again, one that is very impactful, uh, for our drainage system. So again, the next steps on this one will be design, uh, construction engineering services, that contract, it's going to take a while for them to get that design done. It's very complex, uh, what has to happen out there in order to get, uh, that done. And I know it's a major project and it's a major expense, but again, we wanted to only forward projects that, uh, mitigated flooding. And thank goodness, some of the other projects did not do that. So we're able to take the money from those other projects to put it toward a bigger project at Lawrence Lake. The next one will be Lamar and 45th Street. Uh, this is an area that is really, uh, historically, uh, flooding. We've had a significant amount of water rescues at this location. And the reason that we do is because that water gets down there in the low areas, uh, near Bennett Lake and just sits there. It takes it a while to drain into that lake. There's no storm sewers that are underneath. There's one actually that runs on the north side of 45th there that's existing. But we would have to come in here and put in about two, two and a half blocks worth of storm drains, and we think it would make a very significant, uh, impact on that. It calls for installation of multiple inlets, take water off that roadway that would drain to Bennett. Project summary on this one, uh, the PER is complete on that. And this one is actually in design phase, so it's already to the next step. Uh, and it's 1.9 million for that one. And that, again, once we get the opinion of probable costs, uh, which we should be receiving here in the next few weeks, we think that number is going to hold pretty well on that project. The next one would be Playa, uh, seven pump station. This is another one that has been discussed. I, I went back and did a little history on this and I kind of discussed this a little bit with, uh, Councilman Tips the other day as well. I found out, and I didn't even notice this until I did some of this research, we've actually been temporary, temporary pumping that lake since 2014. I thought it was 2017, but it's 2014 we did it, 2016 we did it, 2017 we did it. And then we did it again in, you know, in 2019, we did it in 2023. Then we, 2024 is when we got the, we purchased a pump, uh, didn't want to rent that anymore, brought it before council, you approved that purchase. And so we started temporary pumping so that we could come up with a plan in our CIP, uh, to put a permanent pump station here. Fortunately, this council said, well, let's not do that in CIP, let's make it part of this bigger project. Uh, so that's what we've done. Uh, this calls for construction of a new pumping station, a new force main. That's a long force main, that yellow, every bit of that is a pressure pipe, uh, force main that gets to gravity flow up there somewhere north of 45th, uh, and then would join in with the flow that comes from McDonald Lake. It does a couple of things for us too. We're not pumping up the Greenways Channel in a temporary pipe. We don't have a temporary pump out there. And we are putting water out onto that main drainage channel that we'd be building on the Sanci to the connecting one. This would go to West Amarillo Creek as well through Meta Park and would be fantastic. One of the other pieces of this project that we would do, uh, that's in the, in the, uh, planning stages, uh, would be removing, there's, I, I wouldn't call it a berm, it's more like a, a dike that sits in there. You see the green area of the lake, that's the piece that we own. Uh, we're in the process of, of getting ownership of the rest of that as well. But we have to remove that small island that's in there so that we can continue to pump that lake down from further out with our inlet pipe. And that's the only way that we can do that, to make it one big body of water instead of the two separate. So that's a piece of this project as well. And again, all that will be sent to, uh, Sanci. So the summary of this project is, uh, PER is completed on this. We're ready for design and construction on that. 11 million, 11.7 on this project to get that finished for Playa seven. And then I think that's going to obviously impact, uh, that entire area that is out there. I did get asked a question about this and I wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things. There was, there was some discussion about, well, why are we not pumping this south? Why, why can we not, you know, the county take care of what's on 77th South? There's some issues there with topography. If you go south with that, if you think about how Sanci runs, it goes downhill to Perry Street. So we're pushing everything downhill. There's possibilities we could be flooding, uh, the, the Sanci Street and, and some other areas down there. The, the best and only solution is to send this north to get it out of the city. So that's why this, uh, pump station would be being built there. The multi-site storm sewer is another project. As you look at this map, I'm just kind of guide you through this real quick. You're looking at the intersection of Olson and Western there, and then it goes back to the east. You see Mockingbird is over there, uh, that whole, Lawrence Lake is in the top right corner that kind of orientates you with where you're at. We know that this project here is going to be very impactful for flood mitigation. But the thing that we did realize in the PER is that we have to get Lawrence Lake done first. You can't do this one first, you need to do Lawrence Lake first so that we can have the pumping capacity and we could, it, it just makes sense to do it this way. The other thing is if you do the project, the cost of this one, uh, would put us over the amount of money that we have. And we thought Lawrence Lake would be more important to get done first. And then we're going to plan on this one, uh, to do the plans for it as we're doing Lawrence Lake. We're going to continue with the planning on this. That way we can have a set of plans that are shelf-ready. So that if some funding opportunities come up, whether that's through Texas Water Development Board or through a grant or something like that, we have a set of plans that's ready to go for this once we finish the job at Lawrence Lake. And I think that's pretty smart planning on our part as well. Uh, we were actually going to scrap this and then Jerry Danforth said, no, let's get the plans done while we can. We can afford to do that now. You got to do Lawrence first and, and after consensus was reached on that, I think is a fantastic idea. Scope of this one, uh, we're just going to be doing an extension of the storm drain system to help reduce flooding Western and Olson. It'll make it a shovel-ready project favorable for future funding opportunities. Uh, the PER is done, uh, on that. We're going to start in on the, uh, design phase on this one as well. Should we construct that project? It's going to be around $5 million at today's prices. Uh, we're probably a few years away from being able to get that project done, so that, that, that cost is obviously going to change. And we'd have to seek some funding opportunities in the future. That is in our master plan as well. So it's nothing new to us that this is a project that needs to be done. So a quick summary, this is just the, uh, the current active projects, Lawrence Lake Pumping Station, uh, plans for construction, the west slope repair is all, I failed to mention that and I apologize. When we're doing the construction or the plans for Lawrence Lake, we're going to go ahead and do the plans as well for the other things that need to be done there. The slope repairs, the gabions, the, uh, all the little things that we had that were extra projects, we're designing those, we just won't do those yet until another phase of that project. And you have Playa seven pump station, Lamar Street and 45th, Olson, Western Storm Sewer. And, uh, that all is right at a total of about $38 million when you add it all up. I think it's money well spent and I think we're taking, you know, I, you know, without just saying the elephant in the room, we want to make sure we don't do Prop one again. We're trying to do this smart. We're trying to make sure that we're planning everything out carefully, that we're giving you a list of things that we know we can complete, that we know we can meet within the timeframes. Now, do we, uh, the question that's going to come up as well is, are we going to meet the, the IRS deadlines for these projects? And the answer on that is we're 100% confident that we will. Uh, we're already halfway through with all of, you know, getting our design, uh, contracts ready to go. Once we do that, we'll get ready to start construction. We have more time on Lawrence Lake than we do on the other projects. Uh, and to meet that three-year window for 75% completion, we're, we're all 100% confident we're going to do that. And we're also mindful of it as well. So we're pushing our consulting engineers that we've got timelines, we got to meet, we got things that we've got to get done on that. So with that said, uh, there's one other slide here moving forward. We'll be procuring our engineer and design contracts. That'll be coming before you as well. Uh, and you'll get to see those. And then after that, we'll have our OPCCs for all the projects. We'll have hone those prices down even more. Then we'll be able to provide you with timeline for completion of all the projects. We can't really do that now because we don't have a design. We don't, once we have the design in place, we can start honing in how much contract time we need to get those done. But we do know, and even in talking to the consultants, they all agree that, yeah, this is going to be a year and a half, this is going to be two years, we know we can meet those windows. Then we, of course, would award the bids that would come back to you as well. And then we would start construction, uh, on those projects. So I know that's very lengthy. I hope that it's educational in some ways and, and, uh, you kind of have an idea of where we're at with all those projects.
Thank you for, for that. That was a, this is the first time I've heard all that and, uh, understood every minute of it.
Great, thank you. That means a lot to me. Thanks.
Hey, great job identifying those projects that actually affect the flooding.
100%.
I think that's a great job. As much as I like those lakes dredged, I get it, that doesn't really help a lot.
Thank you.
Well, put that on Kachoo, but you get the fish better at Meddy Park.
Yeah, and I don't think that that, you know, the, the idea of dredging is, is, is not dead for sure. I think we need it for the recreational purposes and we'll find ways to, to approach with that as well.
Good job. I got a better understanding of the whole project now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. So, and what I see the plan is instead of splitting off the water from Lawrence Lake, it's going to go all to Meddy Park?
Yeah, and, and yes, sir. We, so, so now we have it split. We have one pump that goes to East Creek, one pump that goes to West Creek. The idea here is if we increase the capacity of that force main pipe, right now, we can't send everything west because we're at capacity in the pipe. We can't add pumps because we're at capacity with the pipe. When we double the size or more than double the size of that force main, it makes more sense to us to not build two force mains, to build one, that we can put everything west, keep the east pump redundant.
So is there a capacity issue at Meddy Park on how much it can handle? I, I guess it just goes through there.
It's a pass-through, so it, it hits the lake and once it reaches the weir or the drainage channel that drains everything out, it just flows right through, goes under the bridge and down the creek.
But, but we, we could be pushing more water through there in the future than we are now?
Yes, but we're confident that it'll pass through.
And will that cause further problems further upstream as it goes?
I, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Uh, nothing more than what a creek is normally handling. We've looked at some of our pumping models, what we put in the creek as far as pumps are concerned versus what the actual, uh, rain events put in it, and it's significantly less. Even with this amount of water, it would be less.
And Donnie, I believe you, you've stated that the west creek is, is sizable compared to the east creek, is that correct? When you were talking to me?
What's that again?
When you were talking to me, I believe the, the west creek is more sizable than the east creek is.
Yeah, I, they're relative, I mean, once you get outside of town, they're pretty much the same, but you know, we're, um, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that and see if that's, if that's actually, they, they merge up and they both head to the Canadian River, um, but there is a lot. Now, when you first, I, I know where you're going with that. When you first hit, uh, under the Ninth Street Bridge there and it goes, that's a much wider area for it to take the water, yeah.
And then, and I don't know, maybe Alan can answer this. How is, because I know we had some citizens that were concerned about Playa seven. How, how did it do recently? Do we know what capacity? I know we did not have the measurements on it before, but where are we with Playa seven even before we do this work?
Yes, sir, I appreciate you asking that. I had a conversation with, uh, Ms. Kimberly Hamlin today. She's one of the residents out there that has come and spoken. So, uh, I was a little bit surprised while I saw the number for percent volume. Sitting today, we're at 36% capacity for that lake. I used the description of the birdbath. I actually asked Donnie, I said, what would be a really good analogy? Because you're great at that and I'm terrible at it. Uh, and he said a birdbath. Um, there is a very deep hole there that is a very small footprint. And so the first few inches of rain fill that up extremely quick. Once it gets outside of that though, like a birdbath, it spreads out over a large area. Now, every bit of rain you get, much more volume. And so although it does look like, uh, the lake is full, uh, from a volume standpoint, all the way up to the floodplain, we're at about thirty-six percent full. That doesn't mean we're gonna, oh, we're good, we're gonna stop pumping. We will continue running the portable pump as long as we physically can. That number doesn't change that, but it does give us a better understanding of how much uh, storage capacity we have there before we get to the.
But we will also be able to pump that lake much better because of the way that we would have to construct or deconstruct the, the barrier that's in the way to be able to put our inlet out toward the deeper part of that. Uh, right now, we can only de-water a certain portion of that, that lake.
Yeah, a question that came up was, is there any way that we could extend our intake hose at our current portable pump out into the deeper section? And so, so that's a great question. Let me ask our, uh, the company that provided that. And unfortunately, it's not, because we're pumping uphill, uh, I believe it's almost fifty feet. Uh, once you have an intake hose that long out into the lake, it just does not have the suction to pull that much water and then push it up the hill.
And I guess these projects that you identified, I mean, it, we are, we get these accomplished, we're able to really mitigate the chance for an immense flood, I guess, like we've had before. I mean, these are the sources where the, this type of flooding has occurred before?
Yes, and, and, and let me answer it this way, and I, I try to answer this every time that someone poses that question. There's a rain at some point in time that's coming, that even with all the improvements, even if we did the entire hundred and fifty million dollars worth of projects in our drains master plan, that are not gonna work. But we know that what we've identified in our master plan is all the areas where we typically have, uh, high water, things like that. Now, we know some of that drains out on its own relatively quickly, so we've kind of pushed those to the side. And once the ones where we've got problems that can impact businesses and people, uh, that's probably the focus and priority of this. And this does help with all those. I wouldn't say it'll completely eliminate it, because I think that would be a false statement, but I think it's gonna certainly make a big difference in the way we operate and what the citizens have to deal with in those areas.
Yeah, because I think Lawrence Lake is obviously the big one that we had the most problem with before, but Western and Olson is more of, I mean, is there a lot of property damage that usually comes out of Western and Olson or is it just cars?
It's, it's just more, uh, out in the road, out in traffic, and, and we don't have the capacity to get it to the lake. So, you know, once we, once we're able to pump more, we want to put water in the lake faster, because we can pump it out faster. That's probably the best way to describe that project.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Lawrence Lake, twenty-four million. Did you look at I forty on the, the force main or just, I noticed it was going over through Eric Street? So did we, did we look at maybe, is, is I forty an option?
There were, uh, three different routes that we looked at, and, um, I forty would be challenging, um, to go up the way that we, they ran the temporary pump during twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the best route for us as far as money is concerned is to go the Emil Route, if you will, back up toward Bell over there where we dump into that, that inlet there.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate the update on everything. Uh, look forward to getting those numbers back and maybe bringing them in below budget so you guys can reach for one more project.
We're sure, hoping so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Okay, so that is nine E maybe? Yeah, so on to nine F. Uh, Mr. Freeman, if you'll run us through this one. A M W, uh, spay and neuter voucher. Spay and neuter, spay and neuter.
Spay and neuter.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Voucher program.
So Donnie talked about forty million. I'm just here to talk about around twenty thousand, but hopefully just as valuable for the community. So today, we're going to present the next step in our ongoing effort to humanely reduce stray animal overpopulation and improving the public health and safety of our community. Uh, before I get started, I did want to point out, I've got my A M W expert sitting behind me here in Ty Vernon. Uh, he's one of our assistant directors of A M W, so he's going to handle any of the tough questions you might have after I, after I wrap up this presentation. So a little bit of history, uh, before we wrapped up the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, uh, council set aside up to five hundred thousand for animal management and welfare initiatives. Uh, one gap that we all recognize is affordable access to spay and neuter services, particularly in the neighborhoods that generate that highest volume of stray and unaltered animals. Uh, so our proposed, uh, pilot program that we're presenting here today is directly targeting that gap that we have identified. Uh, so by starting small and measuring the results, we're going to be sure that every dollar of that five hundred thousand is ultimately going to be invested where it does the most good. Uh, so a little bit about the, how the pilot is going to work as we've proposed. Um, as far as the scope and location, uh, we're considering a hundred vouchers issued on a first-come, first-served basis, uh, to residents of our designated neighborhood empowerment zone areas, which y'all are all very familiar with, uh, includes North Heights, San Jacinto, Barrio, East Ridge, uh, in particular, um, that we've seen have the greatest call volume, greatest, uh, need for this service. Uh, proof of residency would be required. Uh, we would also limit it to four animals per household, which is consistent with our uh, ordinances as far as how many houses, how many pets you can have in one household. Uh, what the voucher would cover, uh, it'd cover the full cost of surgery, up to two hundred dollars per dog or a hundred dollars per cat, uh, participating with our local veterinary clinics, uh, that agree to sign up with us. Uh, we would require rabies and corov vaccinations plus a permanent microchip be provided onsite before we issue the voucher, so it would be a coordinated effort to cover those services as well, ensuring that every animal is healthy, traceable, and less likely to re-enter the shelter system, uh, after going through this process. Uh, this also is going to ensure that veterinarians, uh, that choose to partner us, uh, to provide the surgery, they're going to have a pet that has been taking care of those basics, uh, before they come through the door, so they know they have the, a healthy animal to, to perform that surgery on. As far as the application outreach, it's going to be in-person sign-ups, uh, partnering with our neighborhood associations, uh, some of their local, um, uh, locations for their meetings, whether it's the Warford Activity Center, uh, the, the Neighbor Association Community Centers, um, of those, those like, um, community centers that we can meet with them onsite, uh, close to the residents that need those vouchers. Uh, we would have streamlined paperwork handled by the volunteers and staff at A M W. Uh, we would also, of course, market this through our normal, uh, means, through O E I's, far as social media flyers, local media campaigns, partnering with those neighborhood associations to, to get the word out about the new program. As far as tracking the pilot program, um, throughout this pilot, one of the benefits of doing a pilot program is it does give us the opportunity to track some data, uh, answer some of those questions early on about what we could do better, what, what we might want to tweak, uh, throughout the process as this program continues to grow. Um, some possible examples of what that might include, we would, of course, look at the number of vouchers that we issue, uh, per household, uh, and then we'd also track how many are being redeemed, um, as well, to see what that success rate looks like. We'd also want to know what the costs are for the vet. Is that two hundred dollars per dog going to be enough? Do we need to increase it, uh, lower it? What, what's that, what's that target to be successful with this program? Um, shelter intake of animals from those pilot zones, we want to see, um, is it helping? Is it getting worse? That is something, of course, that'll take some time to see really true numbers, um, but that is something we would track along the way. Um, what issues or complications from our vet partners, um, that they might be having as far as, uh, working with the vouchers, working with the citizens that are coming in, are there post-surgery complications they're dealing with, um, those sorts of things? And then we, of course, would have, um, surveys for those residents that we're working with throughout this process, just from a customer service standpoint. Is it cumbersome to get through this process? Anything we can do to improve it? Any kind of messaging points that might help? Uh, we can learn all of those things. As far as the Animal Management Advisory Board, we took this to them in April on the twenty-third at their last meeting. Uh, they did vote fours to zero to endorse this pilot after a, a detailed presentation from, uh, the Director, Victoria Medley, and we had a lot of good questions and, and answers to discuss with them. Uh, some of the key refinements that came out of that discussion have already been built into this pilot. Uh, potential concerns about local vet clinics being overwhelmed. Uh, part of the reason we want to do this pilot and just start with a hundred vouchers is we want to see, one, how many vets, um, take advantage of the program? Will accept those vouchers? Uh, are we overloading their schedule? Are they able to take these, um, uh, these pets in and get them out on a routine, uh, basis? Um, we also addressed a question of whether the vouchers will be transferable or not. Um, what we're proposing is that they're going to be tied to that pet and that microchip, uh, so they can't just give it to their, uh, neighbor, cousin, whoever might be asking for a voucher. Um, what instead they need to do, they need to either bring it back or when it expires, we'd be able to reissue it knowing that it didn't get used at, um, at one of the vets. Um, and to go with that, the, uh, voucher is proposed to have a ninety-day expiration. Uh, that's something we'll have to monitor, is ninety days enough with our vet partners to get through, uh, the demand of the vouchers that we've, uh, released into the community, um, to see if we need to tweak that or if that, is that, is that a good target? Uh, we also had the question from the board, how fast could we be ready to get this launched? Uh, we believe thirty days we can be up and running to get the pilot, uh, out and working in the community, um, based on council go-ahead today. As far as funding, um, this uses one-time dollars, uh, already appropriated last fiscal year that came out of that working budget. Um, as far as the, um, pilot today, we're proposing not more than twenty thousand. That would cover a hundred surgeries if they were all dogs, uh, for example. Uh, so no additional, uh, requirement today on funding. Uh, we also continue to apply for spay-neuter grants that could offset the future expansion of this program, uh, which is critical because that five hundred thousand, uh, if we're successful in this, would only cover about twenty-five hundred dogs, for example. Uh, we may also need to put more funds toward microchips and vaccines. Uh, we currently get a, a good number of that from some, uh, nonprofits and donations that we work with that may not always be available, so that's something we'll have to track as well if we're going to try and do the package approach, uh, on these animals. Um, and then as far as direction need today, um, we're, we're just asking for y'alls feedback and direction to proceed with this pilot. Um, only doing a hundred, uh, around twenty thousand, so it's under the, the city manager's limit to approve, so we wouldn't have to come back for a vote, um, at a future council meeting. Uh, what we would propose is to bring back results around July, uh, likely during budget workshops, which would be good timing with the results, lessons learned, some of the metrics, um, that we've, um, brought in, as well as a detailed request to draw on that full five hundred thousand, uh, to continue the program in the neighborhood empowerment zones at full scale. Um, part of that, we'd probably bring back a, a resolution. We've already worked legal to document that five hundred thousand, because this is a case, it's a hundred-dollar voucher, voucher, so it's not something that's a contract for five hundred thousand, but we would want formal action from council to allocate that five hundred, uh, thousand moving forward. Um, so in closing, um, by approving this pilot, you'll allow us to take a data-driven, fiscally thoughtful approach that addresses a critical need in our community. And then I just wanted to pass along thanks from the staff and the advisory board for this continued commitment to, to solutions for A M W to try and make our community, uh, safer. And we'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
So just a general question.
Yes, sir.
When we, when we take in a dog or cat and a owner claims their, their pet, are they required to have that pet microchipped?
If it's picked up as a stray on the street, for example? Uh, no, we do strongly encourage it, but that is something the board is discussing is whether that should be mandatory or not. Now, if it's a, it's, it's a, uh, animal that's been picked up and it's past that seventy-two-hour threshold and it's basically become the A, A M W's dog to adopt out, we do microchip those.
Okay, but we don't, we don't put that requirement on the owner when they claim that, that before that animal leaves the shelter.
Technically not yet, no. No, no.
But that's, but that's something that.
That's something we're discussing.
Disgust.
Yes.
Follow-up question to that, Councilman? No? Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I would say, uh, serving on the Animal Welfare Management Board, I mean, they are extremely appreciative of the resources that we've committed to them. Uh, you know, they spent a lot of time going through this. There's a lot more moving parts to it than you would think, uh, when you're trying to put forth, but I think they've done a good job at, at, at doing that and, and, you know, testing it out like this, I think will give us a good idea of, uh, how it, uh, works moving forward. One thing I, uh, that's part of this, I think is important to know, and I want to make sure I get my facts straight, I think I'm correct, but last year was the first year in several years, we did not take any more animals in than we did before. I think we were down a few hundred animals.
I'll have to ask Ty to walk up to the podium and answer that one.
Intake was down.
Intake's been down.
I, I thought I remember seeing something where intake, it was down not much, but.
Yes, sir, our, our intake was down by a few hundred animals and we kind of attribute that to our, our microchipping clinics that we did throughout the.
Yeah, exactly, I remember that. So I think, you know, to me, this problem can't be solved in, in one or two years, it's going to take a while. But to me, it was encouraging to see that the microchipping, and every time we don't have to take an animal out there, it just, it saves, it saves the taxpayers money. So, you know, in addition to, you know, dealing with the reproduction issue, which is really what's causing this to happen, you know, microchipping, the more that we can get that done and the community done, the more it's going to save taxpayers money on this animal welfare management program. So I think it was an accomplishment, it'd be celebrated, that we did have fewer animals that, that went in, uh, than we did the year before, the first time in, I don't know, probably quite a few years.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, my concern for the pilot is that it may be less feedback, maybe less participation than what we, what we're going for. So what is your feeling and, and yours as well? Do you think that these vouchers will go quick? You think that these pet owners will, will do this quickly so that we would, would we see a ninety-day expiration? And then if you give a ninety-day expiration, how are you turning this around in July? You know, budget time? So I, I guess I'm, I'm worried it may be a little too slow. We may only spend twenty thousand dollars to not really get the data that we need. What, what is your take?
Um, we do believe, um, at this time that the ninety days is kind of sufficient. Um, what we've done is we spoke to those neighborhoods, uh, associations and those empowerment zones, and they've kind of told us that, you know, if, if those people needed help being transported to the veterinarian to make that appointment and get their animal spayed, they would assist with that. So we do think with the assistance of those, um, neighborhood associations, um, and then our pop-up clinics, that we can definitely get it in there within those ninety days.
Part of this will be seeing whatever the barriers, like transportation, that might be the holdup.
Okay.
Hopefully this partnership will help with the neighborhoods.
Um, would, would this council, um, or board, or A M W board be willing to run two pilots simultaneously? And, and what the pitch would be is, is maybe the same twenty thousand dollar, um, allocation, you know, twice. One that goes for rescues and, and puts it towards those stakeholders that are already participating in helping us take care of the population. The other one is going straight into the communities, which we're doing through those neighborhood associations. What would be the, the opinion from, from either of you guys on?
That wasn't discussed with the, the A M W board, um, as far as a recommendation or thought process or challenges. The rescues, majority of them are outside the sea limits, so we had a funding, um, issue there as far as providing resources outside the sea limits.
Okay.
Um, was one, one hurdle we'd have to discuss as far as who receives those vouchers and how are they processed? And, and then you'd also have to track, we've got a lot of people, I think, in the, in the community that, um, will host those animals, but are, are they keeping more than the four that's allowed? Is it one, two? How do you track that? And, um, but that is something we could continue to explore if that ends up becoming a, a priority, or if council directs us to go that path. But A M W advisory board did not discuss that detail.
Councilman Simpson, curious on, on your end, did you, did, did you guys discuss or do you think there's any validity in trying to push some of these vouchers through the rescues in order to open up space in, in their rescues, which helps mitigate our shelter?
Well, I, I think there could be. I think what we just, I, I think kind of what, this is a much more controlled environment. We, we, we've got these areas, we know there's a problem, we've got partners that have said that they wanted to, to help us. And I think rather than spending fifty thousand dollars and saying, wait a minute, that wasn't the best way to use that fifty thousand dollars, I think using a smaller sample size in, in a shorter period of time as we can, uh, you know, to be able to, you know, to, to see what we learn in that initial part of it. So when we are investing more fully, you know, we know, we know what that may look like. I know we've got another meeting coming up, we could certainly take that back.
Yeah, we could add it back for a discussion. We also, Victoria and I bounced around the idea if there's a way to, um, those fosters that we have in the sea limits that we know live here, is there a way to basically vet them and have them as all-star fosters that we want to work with, that we know they're, they're meeting the rules, they're following the process, and they just happen to cycle through quite a few that we could guarantee that they're not, um, ignoring the laws and the requirements.
Right, kind of primary content.
That might be a, a good program to consider, but it'd take more vetting, uh, before we move forward.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, how are we marketing this? I mean, is it just to the neighborhood empowerment zones or?
Yes.
How, that's all we're doing?
It's going to be the neighborhood empowerment zones through the associations.
For the pilot.
Yes.
Okay.
Which happen to be our neighborhoods that have a lot of the issues with strays and overpopulation.
Okay, I was just curious. So we've got basically two hundred vouchers, if the, right?
Maybe.
Two hundred for, or what, yeah, twenty thousand if it's summer cats, that reduces the number, or you might be able to get more if you have some cats that are at the hundred-dollar amount than the two-hundred-dollar amount.
Okay. So I would, uh, I would be curious if we, if we shortened the timeframe to sixty days?
As far as the expiration?
Uh-huh, to try to push this through a little quicker and get those results back so that then you guys could move, um, you know, hopefully on the, the larger amounts of money. And then, um, I, I would be interested in hearing at the next, uh, A M W board meeting if, if they felt like there was a way to go to those signed-up vetted foster, uh, homes as well as, you know, is there any way to stretch across? I'm not trying to take care of county animals with city dollars, but I am trying to open up space in rescues, um, that help us alleviate some of the issues we have with, you know, overcrowding.[1579.74]
Yeah, I think we could do that, the 60-day expiration. I mean, we'll know pretty clearly if they're being used at that time, or if we've got another issue to address, but we can certainly discuss that with the AMW board, as far as other options to consider.
One thing that I would ask this council to entertain is, this is the first step amongst many, in what we know is going to be impactful. We know the spay and neuter program will impact this, but we didn't set a goal of, hey, this will impact this next year. We set a goal of five years from now, this will impact it. So I would ask council to consider bringing something back, with the expectation of needing to refund or refill this 500K again, and that we look at appropriating funds for this on an ongoing basis. Assuming we have good results from this pilot, we would be trying to push another 500,000 into that same earmark, hopefully to where it can last 12, 18 months, to get us through, so cycle in and cycle out. This has been a discussion, I'd say council member Simpson probably attests to this, we don't think this is a short-term fix, but we think over five years, with this, we could impact that population. So just asking for your consideration on it. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would say, you've got a very thoughtful, intelligent, and opinionated animal welfare management board, which is a good thing. They're engaged, but I think we have some people in there, and this council has put some people in there that I think are really wanting to make a difference, and are very passionate about it, but also very knowledgeable on even things that have worked and have not worked in the past. So I think this, the board that we put into place there, will do a good job on this, and may come up with other ideas that we can invest in, too.
And I completely failed to mention, but we had an active group of citizens outside the AMW board that we bounced ideas off of in multiple meetings, that kind of helped develop this as we went through it. So that was also very helpful.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, thank you, Ty, for being here. All right, do I have any future requested agenda items from council?
No, sir.
Nothing today? Okay. I'm going to move us out of discussion, we're going to move into our non-consent. Brady promised me that if we lasted until 6:30 to get here, he would move efficiently and effectively through these public hearings, so we have several. So we're just going to turn it over to you and let you knock them down.
All right, sounds good. Good evening, Mayor Council, Brady Kendrick, Senior Planner. We'll start with ordinance number 8191, public hearing and consideration of this rezoning. This is the rezoning of Lot 1, Block 3, Ben subdivision Unit 27. This is in Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of Bell Street and Farmers Avenue. They are requesting the rezone from General Retail District to General Retail District with a specific use permit for on-premise primary-use alcohol sales and service, with a limit of 50% of total sales being alcohol. Essentially, there is a tenant in this shopping center that is on Bell Street, a barber shop that wants to be able to offer alcohol for sale to patrons while they are receiving service. That is a use that is not allowed by right in general retail, and is the reason for the request. Just a few items to note, this would conform a City Plan 2045 and the place type of commercial for the property. Additionally, it is worth noting that restaurants are allowed to serve alcohol in general retail by right, as long as they stay below those thresholds. So the Planning and Zoning Commission found that that was a very similar use in terms of impact and operation to what the applicant is proposing. Ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to place that 50% cap on this proposed specific use permit, to limit the keep-out bars and other more alcohol-intensive uses, given the development and zoning patterns in this area. We did not receive any public comments on this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve this request as presented with a 4-1 vote.
Real good, Mr. Kendrick. Questions on this one, council?
So because they're generating, because they aren't serving food or something else, then much more of their revenue could theoretically come from alcohol? Is that why the 50% cap was put on there?
So essentially, the Planning and Zoning Commission is ultimately concerned about wanting to limit bars from being able to operate within this area, given that this area is in pretty close proximity to residential land uses in the area. So that's ultimately the biggest reason why they wanted to place that 50% cap on this request.
And how close is it? Or how far away should it be? Or, I mean, if it were further out, we would not have to be changing this, or...
I would say if this was more of a commercial area, because on the map there, the yellow, for example, is single-family zoning, and the brown is multi-family zoning, and there's a church to the south there in blue. If this is in a more commercial district, or say, along one of the interstates, they probably wouldn't have had that same level of concern, but just given the proximity of residences and institutional use, they felt that, they felt more comfortable moving forward with this request with that cap.
Who was the one member that voted against?
The member of the board, Josh Langham.
Okay. Did he give a reason why?
He didn't feel comfortable for it applying to the whole property. He would have been more preferable, I believe, if it was to the specific tenant space, which that's a little bit difficult to do in these multi-tenant buildings. So ultimately, I think that was his biggest concern, was it applying to the whole property and the entirety of the building.
Okay. Councilman Tips?
Oh, no, I'm just on...
Okay. Okay, council, I got my question answered. Any other questions for Mr. Kendrick? At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone who'd like to speak for or against item 10A? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8191 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion on 10A? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Kendrick, item 10B.
All right, well, 10B is ordinance 8192. This is the rezone, a .19 acre tract of unplanted land that is in Potter County, Texas, in the vicinity of Temecula Creek Boulevard and Cabernet Way, to rezone from Agricultural District to Residential District 3. The applicant is OJD Engineering LLC for Amarillo Vineyards LLC. And essentially, this request is simply, they are in the process of building out this portion of the vineyard's neighborhood, and the ultimate plat and design for the neighborhood slightly expanded outside the boundary of the original R3 zoning, so they just needed to add on this additional piece of property to that R3 zoning, to fully encompass the lots that are going to be developed in this area. Given that this is just a continuation of the existing zoning found in the area and that neighborhood, the Planning and Zoning Commission found it was a logical continuation of the zoning patterns in that area. It does conform with the City Plan 2045, the request would, and we have not received any public comments on this item as of today, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a 5-0 vote.
Council questions for Mr. Kendrick. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone to speak for or against item 10B? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8192 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second from Place 1. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Kendrick, 10C.
All right, 10C is ordinance 8194. This is also to rezone from Agricultural District to Residential District 3. This is a 7.18 acre tract of unplanted land in Potter County, Texas. Oh, excuse me, this is a .76 acre tract of unplanted land in Potter County, Texas, in the vicinity of Reitman Avenue and Pavillard Drive. And the applicant is Colton Thompson, and the applicant in this case wants to develop a single-family home on this piece of property, to R3 standards. This request would conform with the city plan's goals and objectives and the place type for the area, given the existing zoning and development patterns found in this area. This property was originally owned by the developer, Fox Hollow, which is there to the southeast, however, they did sell it. So they are essentially requesting the same zoning as the Fox Hollow subdivision. We did not receive any comments on this item as of today, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this one with a 5-0 vote as well.
Very well. Any questions? At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone who'd speak for or against item 10C? With no one shown, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 8193 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item 10C passes. Item 10D, Brady?
All right, so for 10D, and actually through 10G, I'm going to group these together in terms of the presentation, as they're all by the same applicant in the same general area, and then we'll have the public hearings and votes on each one of them individually, but thought it made the most sense to present them together. So we'll start, so in terms of the order of the ordinances, you essentially start at the top of the map there and work your way around. Ordinance 8194 is the rezone from Ag to Light Commercial District. That is a 7.18 acre tract of land there at County Road 45 and Helium Road. The applicants on all these will be Geospatial Data, Inc. for Podsea Properties LLC. The next one to the south is the request to rezoning from Ag to GR, and then Ag to LC again, at the corner of Helium and Hillside, and then to the east of that, another Ag to GR. So that's a summary of the requests. These are on the periphery of Amarillo currently, at what will be the far west side of the Town Square subdivision, which is currently in the beginning of phases of developing. That map on the right there is the zonings overlaid with what they'll be next to, in terms of the approved master plan that is currently on file for Town Square. So just to give you an idea of how that neighborhood will look there, adjacent to these tracks. No plans, specific development plans were expressed to staff by the applicant at this time, so they're essentially zoning needs, get these ready for future development as Town Square and this part of Amarillo continues to develop. The LI Commercial District is focused at the major intersections, and the GR is focused midsection and around those primary entrances to the neighborhood. This one on the screen right now is a closer view of 8194. This one is ordinance 8195, which is an Ag to LC. And then these two are 8196, which is the orange, another LC request, and 8197 is the other GR there in pink. Regarding City Plan, 8194 and 8195 are in the commercial place type category, which those would conform with that category. 8196 and 97 are actually in an area that's identified as Neighborhood Low. In staff's opinion, that was probably an area that got a little overlooked while we were doing City Plan. I'll go to that map there. And that's an area that we'll likely address during an upcoming staff update, to kind of address some of those areas that we knew we're probably going to find occasionally, where they didn't get quite right, because where that's at a major intersection there, that'd be a logical place to have some additional commercial or mixed-use type zoning and a place type in the future versus residential, given that that will be a future major arterial intersecting with the Loop Highway, Loop 335. Requests, though, overall do promote the goals and objectives of City Plan, locating the commercial zoning more along freeways and roadways of higher traffic, and also offering a variety of commercial zoning options up in this section of land to better serve the residents. Currently, there is not any light commercial zoning in this square mile section. The zoning along Sanci is primarily general retail, and then planned developments for car dealerships, so this would incorporate some more commercial zoning at those major intersections. And additionally, by adding the GR at those entrances to the neighborhood, that adds some potentially walkable and accessible options to retail and service types of uses for the residents to the neighborhood. So we felt like having the GR focused in those locations was appropriate, and accomplishing some of those goals. While we don't get that typical transition we would maybe like to see, there are some reasons for that, because there are some of these commercial zonings that will back upon alleys that will be next to neighborhoods. That's already a pretty prevalent pattern in many parts of Amarillo. And additionally, this neighborhood and master plan was done before City Plan was even approved or adopted by council, so this neighborhood was not designed under those design guidelines or that planning paradigm, so that's why, so we're kind of limited on being able to work in a transition. However, the developer did work with us in terms of, this original request was for all these tracks to be heavy commercial, so they did actually work with us to come in with something a little more appropriate for being next to single family, and incorporating that general retail there, those major neighborhood entrances. On this item, we did not receive any comments on any of these four requests, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of all four requests with a 6-0 vote. So I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions on 8194 through 97?
No, sir.
No? Okay. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on 10D. Do I have anyone here who would like to speak for or against this? Seeing no one, we will close item 10, or the public hearing on 10D, and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8194 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second on 10D. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Would open a public hearing at this time on item 10E. Do I have anyone who would speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8195 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to open a public hearing on item 10F. Do I have anyone here who would like to speak for or against item 10F? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on item 10F, and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8196 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Last and final item is item 10G. We would like to open a public hearing on this one. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for or against this? At this time, we'll close the public hearing on 10G and entertain my final motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8197 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second on 10G. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, great job, Councilman Reed. Your first one, one and done, got it behind you, true professional over there. If you would do the honors of adjourning us and calling for that.
I would move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. You're adjourned, thank you, guys.